Okay, good. All right. Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the Allendale Land Use Board, at which formal action will be taken on the items listed on the agenda, and upon any other matters which may properly come before the Land Use Board. The requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied through posting on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website and by publication in the record on December 29th, 2023, with copies being sent to the Ridgewood News. Certain agenda items will be open to the public for comment and/or testimony. The Board will advise the public when such matters are open for their comment and/or testimony. Uh, please, before we get started, if everybody will join me in saluting the flag.
Thank you.
I know.
Okay. Lyndon, please, may I have a roll call?
Vice Chairwoman Bergen.
Here.
Board Member Wazala is absent, and Board Member Petrino is absent. Board Member Gugliaro?
Present.
Councilman DeLuiseo?
Here.
Board Member Dallo?
Here.
Chairman Chirico?
Here.
Mayor Wosinski?
Here.
Alternate Butler?
Here.
Alternate Conti?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, and I just would like to, uh, to point out that we have Mr. Steve Sinisi here, sitting in for Mr. Calley. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Good to be here. Again, you, again, again. Okay, um, next on our agenda, approval of minutes for the October 23rd, 2024 Land Use Board meeting. Um, I reviewed them. Give some feedback to Linda. Uh, any other comments, questions on the minutes from the October 23rd, 2024 meeting? Okay, seeing none? Linda, please, can we have, okay, I'm sorry, can I have a motion to accept the me- the minutes?
I'll make the motion to accept.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second.
You?
Board Member Gugliaro?
Yes.
Councilman DeLuiseo?
Yes.
Chairman Chirico?
Yes.
Mayor Wosinski?
Yes.
Alternate Butler?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, before we, uh, get into the public parts of the meeting, we have a couple of things we need to clear up from last, from the last meeting. The first one are two resolutions. Okay, let's accept this one. Uh, we do, okay, sir. Uh, the first one is applicant file number 2024-11, resolution number 24-18, the application is Antonio and Bimbo, and Bimbo, sorry, 1 East Elbow Drive, Allendale, 07401, block 103, lot 7. The application was for a second floor integrated renovation pursuant to 270-64B, 362, and 270-54A. How good is that one? All right.
Not a problem. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, by way of a quick synopsis, because we've got an extensive agenda this evening, the, uh, this particular resolution involves, uh, requests for, uh, front side yard setbacks on two, uh, discrete sides. The property involved 1.009 acres, and the property was located within the borough's, uh, AA residential zoning district. Uh, following the applicant's, uh, testimony, uh, the Board determined in some reform that the applicant had demonstrated the, uh, appropriate hardship, which is a standard that an applicant seeking, uh, variance relief, in this particular case, from bulk requirements of the zoning district, must obtain. And the Board was satisfied that based upon the proofs that the property owner offered, that hardship was demonstrated, and, uh, voted by voice vote at that meeting to approve the application. Sir?
Okay, is there any questions, comments on this resolution? Okay, seeing none, uh, may have a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Sir? Yeah.
Board Member Gugliaro?
Yes.
Councilman DeLuiseo?
Yes.
Chairman Chirico?
Yes.
Mayor Wosinski?
Yes.
Alternate Butler?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. All right, Council, second one, please.
Second one, yes, would be, uh, Michael and Melissa DiTola?
Yep.
Block 2008, lot 9.09, also known as 130 Elmwood Avenue. Uh, and if we sound like it's similar to the first, it is, in some respects. Again, once again, the applicant was seeking, uh, re- relief from this board, uh, for side yard setbacks and a minimum rear yard setback as this, as established by the zoning code. Here, the property is .275 acres, located in the borough's A residential zone. The applicant was sworn, provided testimony, as did his app, uh, his, um, architect. And based upon the proofs that they presented, uh, the Board concluded that they had demonstrated, uh, a sufficient hardship to entitle the applicant to the relief they were seeking. Uh, they approved the application with the conditions which were set forth that included that all fees and assessments required by ordinances, uh, be, uh, be paid in full, and that, uh, the drawings conform and be consistent with the approval.
Okay. Yeah. Board members, any comments, questions on it? Okay, seeing none? Linda, can I have a motion, or, I'm sorry, can I have a motion, please, for acceptance of this resolution? Motion, thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you.
Board Member Gugliaro?
Yes.
Chairman Chirico?
Yes.
Alternate Butler?
Yes.
Polling vote on? What do you have? Who's here?
And you have? We had a, oh.
On this one? There was no, there's nobody on. There's somebody else, there's nobody else who can vote on this?
Um, I have two people that were out for their, and two people that were recused.
Were accused.
Uh, you could, I'd, no, I wouldn't do that. There is a body of law that does suggest that recusals, um, might in appropriate cases, now, that would be an extension, never mind, I take that back. Uh, you do have a quorum. Uh, you have a majority of your quorum voting for it, but if you want to be ultimately, uh, safe?
Can we call somebody? Can we call Frank?
Okay, will you come down?
Can we, can we do it by phone? I don't know where he is.
Yeah, I don't know where he is.
Why don't we carry the vote, uh, till a little later in the meeting, and then we can decide?
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Hold the vote until, uh, you can find if Frank is available. Okay?
Thank you very much. For doing that. Okay. And those are the two votes, although. Um, we have another, we have another agenda item which is voting on the Land Use Board meeting, uh, dates for next month, but before we do this, in fairness to those members in the audience who are here to listen to the application, um, for, for Brett and Cindy Benowitz, which, oh, she's here, which is on 43 Colonial Drive, uh, in Allendale, 460. That particular application has been requested by, um, by the applicant to be carried to the January 15th, 2025 meeting. So if you're here for that application, we will not be hearing that tonight. Okay? So, um, Lyndon, is that, we have, that doesn't have to be asked for carries, does it have to be renoticed?
No, it would not have to be renoticed as long as you announce when it's being carried to, number one, and, uh, I'll ask the Secretary, are we close to, uh, that period of time where we would insist on a extension of time from the applicant?
Um, everything is fine with them. They requested it.
Okay.
That's the date they requested, and it's.
And they've agreed to carry it?
Yes.
Okay. Then, then you're fine.
Okay, I didn't see this.
Okay, there's actually, that was provided.
That is correct. I put it on the record on a correspondence dated November 5th, 2024. Uh, the applicant's architect represented that, uh, uh, the applicant would not have to renotice, and that, uh, they would be advised at the next meeting date, uh, when the matter would be placed on the agenda and carried.
And we spoke and agreed on January 15th.
There you go. So on the record, it's, sir and ma'am, January 15th. All right?
We have a majority. Again.
Okay. Thank you.
We apparently do have a, yeah. Vote on.
All right, so hold on a second, so.
It was just a second.
It was just a second.
Yes.
So we already had.
We already voted.
We already voted.
Then you're done.
So then we're done. Okay.
You let them know.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're done. The resolutions are done. All right? Okay. Okay. Bringing it back now to our next agenda item, which is voting on the 2025 calendar of Land Use Board meetings. Board members, I believe you were all provided with the dates here. Um, I'm going to point out that there are two dates that seem a little bit odd. Uh, we normally meet on the third Wednesday of every month with a potential la- uh, work session on the Monday night before that. Um, Linda and I spoke about these uh, while this was being put together, and Linda, I'm just going to ask you to comment. I know that there's a couple of dates that seem a little earlier in the calendar, and I know you have noticed to why we went that way.
Um, the April dates were, um, should have been the 14th and the 16th, but we changed it because there's spring recess for the schools. And also, to get us far away from the holidays in December, we moved it up a little bit so that we're not so close to the holidays. So we're on the 8th and the 10th. As opposed to the 15th and the 17th. That's it.
Board members, any comments, questions relative to the dates that we're going to put forth? Okay. So, can I please have a motion to accept the dates as written, provided to all for our meeting note, for our meeting dates for the year calendar year 2025?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Second?
Oh, second.
Fight over, it's solved out. All right.
Board Member Bergen?
Yes.
Board Member Gugliaro?
Yes.
Councilman DeLuiseo?
Yes.
Board Member Dallo?
Yes.
Chairman Chirico?
Yes.
Mayor Wosinski?
Yeah.
Alternate Butler?
Yes.
Alternate Conti?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda, um, is a review of the amendments of the land use plan in the HBAS study, uh, to continuing presentation by our, our planner, um, um, Ed Snikus. So, Ed, I'm just going to turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, Ed Snikus from Burgess Associates. Um, I distributed to the Board a memorandum dated November 7th, 2024. This, this document is to address some of the ongoing discussions that the Boards had with regard to the land use plan and the master plan. We're currently looking to amend that document, bring it up to date, and adjust some of the contents within that document. In addition to that, we're also simultaneously doing the Hazard Vulnerability Assessment Study, uh, which is something that we'll be taking up at the next meeting. Um, but yet, for tonight, I just wanted to quickly discuss with the Board some of the changes that we've added to the actual land use plan draft document. And the reason why we're discussing this is that this forms the basis for your overall zoning locations. So we wanted to reflect the existing zone plan, plus, at the same time, reflect some of the developed condition uh, within the community. And so what we've done is there's three separate areas that I've identified in this memorandum. Uh, the first is at, uh, block 1102, lot 14, and block 1604, lot 15, which is, uh, two parcels that I show on a diagram below this location that shows the existing 2005 land use plan, and then the proposed 2024 land use plan. And what you'll see is that we've designated the two areas now within the corresponding public and, uh, religious use activities for those lots, and the reason for that is the ML3 zone for those two parcels was back in 2013 amended so that it did not include those two parcels due to an adjustment we made in the housing plan at the time. So therefore, we wanted to reflect that in the land use plan, that that has been changed. And I provide an aerial photograph on the backside of that page so you can see where that is in case there's any questions. It was really capturing the open space of the, the school property, and then also the religious institution that's adjacent to it. The second one is block 1806, like, lot 9.02. Uh, this is, uh, another location that was in the ML4 zone. It's actually still within the ML4 zone, but it was developed as a park in the overall, uh, process of the development of Crescent Commons that was developed in that area. So this area was designated as a park, developed as a park, and so I wanted to identify it within that land use category. And you can see the before and after on this page, as well as the aerial photograph, to see what that difference is. The third item is on the, uh, last page. It's block 910, lots 2.01, excuse me, 2.02, 2.03, 2.04, and 12. It's in the A residence zone. It's developed condition right now is single family. If you recall, there was a, uh, a subdivision that enacted the, and changed the location and configuration of the lots in that area that were adjacent to the religious institution that's on, um, Crescent Avenue, and that the, uh, subdivision added a cul-de-sac and a new, uh, stormwater basin, as shown on the aerial photograph with three lots. So we've now revised that land use designation in that area. So I wanted to bring those to your attention, and that's what's on the draft map that we also distributed to the Board, which is this document here that I have, 11 by 17 of. And in addition to that, in discussions, uh, in our office, also discussions with the Board Engineer, uh, I wanted to point out two other, uh, three other things that we'd like to change in the land use plan. The first is in the northerly or top of this page, which is the former farm property that was previously developed. We had reflected the ML, I believe it's ML3 zoning that's for that area, which is true, it's still in the ML3 zone. But if you recall how that was developed, it was developed with all single-family homes, and that instead of a multifamily development at that location. So in order to be more accurate to the land use, we were going to identify it within the single-family developed condition, but that put an overlay, uh, depiction on there, not a zone, but a depiction to identify that that is also consistent with the ML3 zone. So that therefore, it's, it's reflecting the developed condition, and it's more accurate.
Um, isn't that where our veterans' homes are?
Yes, there is. The veterans' homes are there as well.
That, and that, that, as I'm looking at the map here, I was going to ask the same question. That brought it out too, Chris.
Correct.
Okay, so in addition to the houses that, to that cul-de-sac or.
You have that development foreground. Exactly. Um, the next item is the, uh, Park and Ivy application. If you recall that application, that was approved on Park Avenue. The court approved that development for multifamily. It's currently listed in the commercial business zone because that's what the zoning is for that area, but it's going to be developed for multifamily. So that is something I'd like to change on that location. That was, uh, brought to my attention by the engineer. In addition to that, um, the celery farm, we had located in the public land use, but looking back at the prior land use plan, it's actually in the park's recreation open space appropriately. So we're going to move it back into that designation. So I wanted to describe that to the Board, so when you see the next draft of this document, you'll see those changes. Um, and then in addition to that, one last thing would be, I know we're discussing the, uh, assisted living facility, uh, the end of Harrington Road in the near future. But yet, that's been in the developed condition way back even before 2005's land use plan. So, uh, one thing I'd like to do is to identify that in the assisted living category uh, of the, of the land use plan, because likely that developed condition's going to exist and continue to exist. So why not reflect the right category for that location? And so, Mr. Chairman, that's what I had for the Board, uh, unless there's any questions.
Might I, might I ask, um, what we're doing where the, um, where the drive-through used to be? On Elm?
On Elm? Okay.
I don't know if you want to comment. Right, we'll build this for apartments here? I just want to make sure that it says it being appropriate. Doesn't need to be.
I see what you're saying. You're the drive-through bank.
It was, it was.
It was the drive-through bank, right, it's multifamily. That's actually in the commercial category. Yeah, we could identify that in the multifamily category, too. So that would be the last item. It's good of you.
All right. So, I, is that, is that, forgive me, decision-wise, is that?
That helps me.
Take care of that?
Yes, I'll take care of that. You'll see that in the next draft. I, the purpose for this discussion is to make sure you're seeing the changes that I'm making on the map, and also give me input of other things that I may have overlooked. So that's something that I'll add to this map. So that when we do come back to you and what I have right now of the land use plan, just for an update as far as where we are with that document, we finished the land use designation descriptions in a draft form. I'll be sending that out to the Board for your review, and we can schedule a future meeting to discuss that. And why, uh, why that's important, it talks about the relative densities and/or land use characteristics for those areas in a descriptive form, and that helps to really solidify the specific designation for that zoning for that area. So that, uh, description will be taking some of the description from the prior 2005, but embellishing on that and making any changes and/or additions, such as the assisted living, uh, location that we just talked about, which wasn't captured at all in the prior land use plan. So that's what will be provided. In addition to that, we're also doing a background data update, uh, which has to do with the demographics of the community. That's also going to be part of the land use plan. And then any changes to, uh, or external, uh, development, uh, items that we may want to identify. And if, I've identified a few of them, including, I think we had a conversation previously about, um, uh, last mile warehouse or distribution facilities, and saying that that's really probably not appropriate for anywhere within our borders, uh, or light industrial zone or our business zones. So that would be another thing that would be, you'll see in the, the next draft of the land use plan. But I expect to have that draft probably in the next two weeks, and I'll distribute that to the Board digitally, but then we can also schedule a future meeting to go over that.
That's a good question. Um, for 212, 210, actually, 210, 220, so the Vale, it loo- it looks like you have it as an overlay zone.
That's correct, because that's what it was. It's actually existing as an overlay zone.
It was, because I, we, we, um,
The MF.
Seemed it as a redevelopment zone, and then it was part of our third round.
Correct.
Okay, because I, because I see the other ones that, that I know were our overlay zone.
Right.
I was just.
That's in the MFRO-4, and it may not be clearly readable at the scale, but yet, uh, if you look closer, or if we, we'll, you'll have a, a larger map of this, as it, as it were, with the document, but that shows in, in that overlay zone category.
Ed, I have some questions.
Yes.
So Crescent Commons. Um, you show that it's, looks like single residence. Is that, uh, single-family residence?
That's probably another good catch, um, that corner or triangular piece that's near the railroad. That should be probably designated into that category.
Yeah, because a lot of those units are, you know, two, two people. Person units.
Right. It's more of a multifamily designation than it is.
It looks like you have Orchard Commons as commercial.
No, Orchard Commons is in the multifamily. That's a brown.
Well, that's a little brown.
Yeah.
That's a little brown.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
But I will change Crescent Commons.
I also, I also just, I happen to look at a piece of property uh, that I see every day because of my commute. Um, and just to, just so the public is aware of it, that little, that little piece at the end of Dimicurio that's on Orchard, some residents may say that there's some work going on there. This is not a work discussion. But that particular small piece of land is designated as open space and will remain as open space.
Right. That's where they see the, I guess there's utility work going on there.
Yes, and, yes. Okay. So nobody gets. Harrowed. Okay. Oh. Any more for us?
That's what I have. Um, the next meeting, which is December, uh, 16th?
December, Monday, December 16th.
Right. That meeting, I'll come to that meeting with a presentation on the hazard vulnerability in a draft form. Uh, the purpose for that is to solicit the public for input. So we look to make an advertisement of that on the webpage, if at all possible.
With that, with that.
Linda, right?
Yeah, I, I can help you with the notice for that. It's not really a formal notice, but it's, uh, really more descriptive, and it breaks it down in more layman's terms as far as what we're doing.
Board members, any questions? Comments?
Just the discussion.
Discussion. All right, good. All right. And as always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Will you need me for the remainder?
Um,
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Bye, Anne.
Thank you. I'll see you soon.
So moving on, moving on with our agenda, um, as I already mentioned, yeah, the Benowitz application being carried to January 15th. So the next application, applicant file 2024-42, Siney Brady and Jason Bell. The address is 71 Brookside Avenue in Allendale, block 1705, lot 15, and the application is for an existing of a non-conforming structure on an irregular flag lot and rear yard setback. This is pursuant to 270-57D, 270-37K parentheses two. Okay. Are you, thank you.
Who will be speaking to the applicant first?
Yeah. Happy to.
Well, why don't you introduce it, and then I presume to, you're right, as you're expert. He's your professional, but if you stand up, raise your right hand, give us your name and address, we'd love to hear you.
Uh, Jason Bell, 71 Brookside, my wife's Siney, and apologies for the plus one. We didn't have any, uh, babysitting.
Never apologize.
Sorry about that. So we moved to the area in 2021. Excuse me.
Administer the oath. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you appear here this evening in support of this application?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for coming for us, and, uh, welcome, and tell us what you want to do. Thank you. So. Thank you. We, we, we moved the area in 20, March of 21. Um, it's a, uh, hat hazard COVID by the time, fell over Allendale. Um, we're, we obviously, Charlotte is a, a new addition. We're excited for another addition in March. So we're looking to put a, an extension on the, of the family room, a little bit larger area, and also it's a three-bed, three-bath. Um, so obviously, this is the New Jersey accent, so personally, so trying to expand house for some family to come over as well to visit. So we're going to put a four bedroom on the top of the, this thing, probably put in some other, explanation on top of it.
So am I, am I understanding that your testimony is that, uh, you are, uh, seeking to expand to the purposes of the expanded family?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Uh, and of course, uh, you have a professional with you tonight that, that designed this alteration? All right. Unless the Board members have any question of the applicant, uh, I would like to go ask you, would you raise your right hand, sir, and be sworn? Would you state your name and address for the record?
Thomas Pacific Office, address 297 Valley Boulevard, Woodbridge, Jersey. Also a visitor of Allendale.
Thank you, sir. Do you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in connection with your? Thank you, sir, do you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in connection with your appearance and testimony this evening?
Right.
Would you, you have, uh, what is your profession?
I'm a, a registered licensed architect, stated in Jersey, I'm a third United States licensed contractor. Uh, here's what we have.
Have you, have you, uh, how long have you been licensed in New Jersey? And is your license in good standing as you appear here this evening? And you are familiar with this application?
Yes.
Alright, why don't you narrate what, uh, you've done on behalf of the applicant?
Okay, so, um, as we kind of worked out with, uh, we're looking to add a, a family room addition, which if you're looking at the key which drawing package. That's the, uh, the blue square, uh, on the back side of the, the building. That'd be a one-story family room addition. Um, the pink area is part of the, uh, second floor addition. Um, and the green area would be a two-story addition, that would have a house in, uh, the orange module and part of the second floor bedroom, obviously, the floor plan, to get a full understanding. Uh, just to quickly touch on the variance that we're looking for, uh, we have two non-conforming additions. Uh, one is the block width and the second is a rear yard setback. As you clearly see from the block plan, we have a very unique shape, uh, shape of this property. Um, in fact, for five years that I've lived in here, I didn't know this house existed, I'm heck there, I guess, five years ago. Um, so, um, you know, because of the unique shape of the lot, um, block lines, the almost horizontal block line with the back as a rear plot line, thus making the fifty foot rear yard setback somewhere kind of in the middle of the existing structure. Um, the other one with the block width, um, it's an existing non-conforming addition and we're not altering the, the lot. Let me take you through the, the floor plans, just so you have a sense of what's happening with, uh, additions. Um.
And just to interrupt with, with apologies, uh, Linda, with, this was submitted with the application or after the application?
With the application.
So it's considered part of the application and we do not mark that as A one, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
This is the exact set that, well, I was, I love that.
That would have been the next question, is what you're pointing to?
That is the exact copy, I printed this off. Uh.
Thank you.
So, uh, real quick on A one, these are the existing, uh, floor plan. Uh, first floor, you know, come into the center hall entry, there's a dining room, uh, living room, front, kitchen, kind of them at all, with, uh, an open, like, living room, uh, vanity, that. And then a full bath, uh, with a shower and pretty much like a module, this is kind of more like a car. Uh, existing floor, uh, you come up to the top of the stairs, you have a two bedrooms towards the front of the house. Uh, one common bath and then the master's balcony back, uh, with the existing bedroom, the, the, the full bath there as well. Uh, one bit to sheet A two, these are the floor plan. So what we're looking to do is put the addition, um, towards the back part of the house. That would become the new family room, the existing family room, we're going to convert to make their kitchen a little bit larger, right now the kitchen's a little bit, uh, narrow and a little bit tight. So we're looking to expand the kitchen and make that a kind of a deep kitchen area, the front of the house will stay, uh, as it is. On the second, oh, and, right, well, you're adding small mudroom addition, it's basically like three foot flags, um, on the inside dimension of the existing outside wall out. Uh, that'll create a little bit of a vestibule area, uh, keeping the existing bath, uh, intact. Um, that also will enable us on our second floor for our new bedroom, that gives us, um, basically an eleven foot uh, six by, uh, what's it, what's nine, uh, new bedroom, so, uh, we're not really wanting to, uh, allow the house to, to get one more bedroom for that area. Uh, the one existing bedroom, the front left, uh, that we modified slightly just to provide access. And everything else on the second floor is staying the same. Um, I'll skip down to drawing A four, to our elevations. And we see how we tied the, uh, one floor, a varying addition. Uh, we could modify the two windows, things that, uh, get above, uh, because, yeah, the, the, perfect, yeah, the wood cage. And then our new two-story addition, um, with the, the entry board to the side, which is pretty much just pulling the elements that are there now, kind of how it looked with it. Um, we're not going above our, the existing roof height, so we don't have any height issues, certain enough. Um, the siding, uh, will match the existing siding, I know that was one of the, your reports, but, uh, the existing siding is like a hundred green, uh, color, the new siding matched that. Um,
To the record, that's four point one of the engineer's review correspondence of November fourth, where he asks the testimony in this record as to the proposed building finishes, colors and material.
That's correct, so everything on, for the exterior will match the existing with the, uh, the trim and the siding will match the existing house.
And as an architect and obviously having been to the site.
Yes.
On more than one occasion, you've observed the surrounding area, would you consider this, uh, adaptation for the, uh, modification to be consistent with the streetscape in this area?
Uh, sure, you, you can't even see the house from the road, uh, you have to go down, there's a private drive, uh, picture that of, yeah, the block plan, um, that, the back area where the house is located, but the, the additions do fit in nicely, there's not, uh, massive, the, we are, you know, well under the floor area ratio allowed to a lot. Um, and then just to address a couple of the other issues that you're reporting, uh, the, the existing mechanical, mechanical equipment is currently housed on the, uh, the north side of the, the property, uh, towards the rear, uh, your, of, uh, the adjacent property, uh, the, the, the front of the flag lot. Um, that exists, that equipment is existing to remain and we're just going to extend off of the existing equipment for the additions. Um.
When you say remain, remain in place?
It's going to remain in place, there are no new, uh, no, there's no new mechanical equipment going on the exterior, uh, as part of, of this work. Okay. Um, and then the other, uh, question, the four point three was, uh, tree removal, there is no tree removal necessary for these additions, uh. Currently, there's, uh, where the larger addition is, the one-story addition is just, uh, open grass area. And this right now, they're part of the walkway and a few, uh, like planting areas would be modified to stretch out a little bit to, uh, accommodate that addition. Um, and the, the new area will be, uh, will have probably just some planters like around the perimeter and then the grass that there will just cover me. Um.
What about water and sewer connections, four point four?
I think that could be looked at, uh, you know, as part of the construction work. See if there's any necessary, you know, addition or re-party additions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the engineer, would that satisfy your comments, sir?
We will be satisfied with that.
Okay.
And, and one thing, I think also, um, you said nothing, no change on, no change on mechanical, lighting, do you want to, do you want to speak on lighting?
Um, the only thing, as far as exterior lighting goes, uh, right now, we're just adding or relocating the light by side door, uh, so going back to my elevation of drawing A four, uh, the side door that's here, uh, just currently, uh, like adjacent to that door, that's just going to be brought out further, uh, there are no other lights that are proposed on the exterior, uh, if everything else would be existing to remain on it.
And that light would be obviously to ensure, uh, visibility and safety, correct?
Down the path to get to that site or, because the, uh, the garage is setback, um, on the property, so and then the driveways, the heart of the building as well, so coming in, you know, I think that would just give you this feeling of, of, of. Uh, what other, uh, drawing to film, just, uh, as we can have it here. Um, on the last sheet, which I labeled C one, uh, this basically is the, uh, active tax pathing. It shows the property with the surrounding property, the houses, and you can see that, you know, how unique the shaped property is with the surrounding property, the, the one house, um, directly to the, uh, east, uh, it was also on a unique shape and that property is actually determined by, uh, Ramsey Brook that comes down, you know, in behind the property. Uh, why, you know, one other issue and we are, we're working on getting an engineer review, in the very top corner of the property, um, for just a few square feet, the flood zone comes through that, uh, back area. Uh, but it has no real impact on any, uh, of the area where our addition is going, and we are having an engineer evaluate that and provide a report for, uh, it's, uh, for, for, yeah. Good with that?
Yeah, and, and we took a look at the, the flood hazard map and it does look like based on a visual inspection that it's on the property and all likelihood is probably, uh, impacting, the elevation not impacting the house, but we asked for a verification.
Right, that's a spooked.
You'll provide that?
That'll be.
And you understand that the engineer has also recommended in four point five point one, uh, that the applicant apply for and obtain a soil movement permit?
Yeah.
You understand that? Would that be a major or minor?
Uh, we only have a minor, so it'll be a better.
There you go.
Yeah.
So that does not require a public hearing?
That's perfect. No, that'll be, uh, that'll be, uh, a condition to get into construction permits.
Oh, right.
And you also know that at the end of the day, if this board should approve your application, the engineer has recommended that you provide an as-built plan, uh, before requesting a certificate of occupancy, which means what you've represented, what you've done is as shown on the as-built plan. Okay, you have no problem with that, you'd agree to that as a condition if it's, if it's established, correct? Thank you, I have one more question, Mr. Chairman. Sir, architect but not planner?
I am an actual planner.
You do, well, that's wonderful, because the next questions are going to help this board decide your case or your client's case. Do you know what the criteria is to obtain a hardship variance as a professional planner? That's the seventy C variance that the engineer has pointed out on the, I believe, his, uh, third page of his report of the November fourth. You've been using throughout your testimony, the words unique, uh, if I were to substitute the word exceptional, uh, to connote something different or unique, uh, from what I've heard you testify to, it sounds like you've met the criteria for a hardship variance. As a professional planner, and I didn't qualify you as such, but you testified as a planner before? You have, so let me ask you, sir, in your professional opinion, do you consider the, uh, the applicant, uh, proposal to satisfy the criteria for hardship relief?
I do, I mean, it is an exceptionally unique problem, like, thinking there is, doing architecture, I have property uh, that, as, was as unique as this, uh, so I do believe that it does meet the criteria first.
I have nothing for it.
Alright, thank you.
Do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, no, thank you for.
Would you, would your daughter like to add something, I can swear her too? No, no, lovely, lovely, sorry.
Thank you very much, Billy. No, well, please, thank you.
All are welcome.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we're welcome, we're welcome too. Um, before I go to the board, anything else?
No, I mean, we've been out there, we've looked at the size of your, with the application, and it's, it is a very, a piece of property now, you know? And, uh, unusual configuration and the addition is, you know, towards the, you know, the side of the property that's not going to be very visible, that's visible at all to many of the surrounding properties.
Um, I just have one thing, I know that, I know we're talking, talking about the house, but I have to ask a question, there's no other servants that exist, I noted that there's a garage.
Correct.
Okay.
No.
None of that, it's being asserted.
No, detached garage, garage house will remain as it's, no work.
No work, no longer.
Okay.
No change to the driveway configuration?
Yeah.
Okay, and so the small area that is closest to the brook. I know we're getting an engineer, I know you have your testimony there, but there's nothing, it's going to minimize everything.
But there's, there are water and.
Okay.
To get that on the record, right, okay.
I don't have any, it's, I don't, what about this?
So there's the one page, you were referring, remember you probably talked about it, there's a red and there's a green, of the blue as the existing house. Okay, so that's right, the red, the, the, uh, the, uh, surrounding properties. So the, uh, the existing house is not colored in, on, on this one, I probably should have changed it a little bit different. It wound up being colored in the same, uh, piece of shade in the property. The blue is the new family room addition, the red is just the second floor addition, and the small green area is the two-story addition. Um, then we're putting on the house that, uh, the bedroom on.
What is the outline of the proposals?
The proposal structure is outlined, you know, with the blue, uh, square being the band of, single-story family room.
Right.
The, uh, and then the red, the green are the new additions that will compromise, uh, or, or some of the, uh, the new mudroom and the new second floor bedroom.
What about the existing?
The existing house is the shape that, um, it kind of, uh, maybe pointed out easier, it, it, the gray and the red, uh, is this one here, it's gray on this, so that exists, so, yeah, the house. Right, right, it's just, that's ready to pick that. Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
No, I think it's pretty obvious, I mean, I, I think all the years I've been sitting on these boards, I don't think I've ever seen a piece of property shaped like that. And I think it, it's obvious that, uh, you've shown that there really is nothing you can do that's going to change the hardship at all.
Right.
I mean, I assume your downspouts all pitch, you don't have elevations on here, so I'm assuming all your downspouts pitch towards the corner of the Ramsey Brook, where you have the.
Right, we are, that's, that's way currently.
And you're not going to propose to have any new downspouts pitching anywhere else?
Don't do it all. Alright, training. It's fairly level by for, once you get that down there.
We always like it on the record that you don't have downspouts pitching toward your neighbors. Yeah, this, this one's pretty, uh, I don't have any questions to answer very fully, yeah.
Okay, see, I, I also have to share, I live in this town, but I never even did so sick of this. Sorry. Um, I, I'm satisfied, anybody else? Okay, um, what, now what we do is we open it up to the public for any questions, comments relative to this application or any of the testimony that you've heard. Okay, seeing that, I bring it back to, for further discussion. So, okay, um, can I have a motion, please, uh, for approval?
The chairman, I'll make the motion to, uh, approve this application based on the testimony. I think the applicant has more than proven that, uh, the hardship for the variance, uh, and also the stipulations that he testified to as far as engineers report and to our board attorney.
Thank you, sir, I have a second. Guys want to fly over again? Alright, we'll give it to Mr. Dallo. Okay. Great.
First Chairwoman Bergen?
Yeah.
Board Member Guguiaro?
Yes.
Councilman Delavissio?
Yes.
Board Member Dallo?
Yes.
Chairman Sarico?
Yes.
Mayor Wazinski?
Yeah.
Fulton and Butler?
Yes.
Fulton and Crancy?
Yes. Alright, look.
Good luck.
Nice job. So next month, there'll be a resolution for this. Um, and then you don't have to be here. In the meantime, you can start to put stuff together, coordinate lives and get it in, but you know, the resolution will be, you're saying good, but I'm not sure coming here, not, right? Okay, so, um, stay, stay. It, it won't be able to get progress until the resolution. Yeah, exactly, so you won't, you won't get, you have the least possible, okay, start to put it together. Right, thank you very much. Good luck. Very much, appreciate it.
Alright, congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Bye bye.
Alright, next on our agenda, please, is applicant file number twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, Daniel Claire Clark, ninety-five Midwood Avenue, Allendale, New Jersey, oh seven four oh one, block two oh eight, lot two. The application is for a new front porch and a second floor addition pursuant to two seventy dash thirty-seven parentheses A two, two seventy dash sixty-four C parentheses two, and two seventy dash sixty-three parentheses three. How are you?
Alright, on behalf of the applicant, who's going to testify or or both will both of you? Okay, so then why don't we have all the witnesses to expedite, raise their right hands and uh give your name when I administer the O. Pardon?
Florida.
F A R, yes.
So you guys. I have to recuse. You have to recuse. Alright, but let's do this first and then.
Okay, sure. Okay, so raise your right hand and be sworn. Uh do you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, uh as you appear this evening to provide testimony and support of this application? Alright, would you state your names and addresses starting to the right? And sir, are you appearing as a professional on behalf of this applicant? Thank you. Do you hold a planner's license? Okay, so you're testifying strictly as the architect.
Yes, but hang on, no, no, excuse me.
So find out who's who's sitting.
So you have to go to the next whole applications court application. Okay, so.
So. Yeah.
So. Okay, if you just have that for the record. Hello. John, you can have it. Thanks for that. Cheers. Right.
I don't know how vested you are in this process, but do you know why these individuals are recusing themselves? Okay. And and happy to tell you, because the land use law requires that when it is or an applicant involves a D variance, uh the members of a governing body cannot sit and hear that application. Uh and that would be one of the individuals recusing herself was the mayor and a councilman. So they are by by dint of the statute called the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law, as well as case law required to recuse themselves.
And then we have to make sure also we have a forum which we.
No, we have a quorum, but we we may have to talk about a vote on a D variance.
Correct.
So I think in deference to their presentations, we hear everybody now.
Okay.
And then we'll talk about whether or not it's appropriate uh to take a vote tonight. Uh so you know, anybody who isn't here tonight, should this should the chairman and the board decide to carry this application or carry the vote? Incoming members at the next meeting would have to read the transcript, certify that they read the transcript or listen to the tape and then could vote if there was an issue with the number of votes being sufficient tonight for a floor area ratio variance. We're going to talk about that. We'll talk about. Okay, so you said you wanted to make the presentation, so or start.
Tell tell us what you want to do.
Yeah.
What your hardships are, okay?
Well, I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm resident in twenty nineteen. Um very happy now, Dale, best recent art. First grade initial size. Um. We just we love our neighborhood, we're very happy here. We have already done one project with John, we added a bedroom. I think the purpose for that was closed in January. Two. Um. Just put a lot of love into the property thus far. Um so we're excited. You know, making what we love to get this next bigger project. Um. Oh, sorry, but I also want to thank you for your time, and I want to shout out to Linda, because thank you for your patience and helping me with the application.
I just want to point out, the last time, the last you said you did a project before, but that project did not require you coming forward for. Everything was done, gone through the.
Yeah, perfect.
Permits and the whole thing, and there was no needs. And okay, okay, just want to put it on the.
Hey, he must have, he must have satisfied the zoning requirements.
Yep. Yeah, I didn't know what I think any application. I'm I'm just going through it now, but I wanted to make sure we just have that up correctly. Okay, okay, alright. Right. Thank you for preparing the course.
I just need to get a little more for the record, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, and not trying to uh disturb your presentation, but I think the board would benefit for just a little bit more. What what generated the uh desire to engage the services of an architect for your addition? Was there something going on in the household or with the structure? Uh help us out.
Very small key. Three keys in a row. Um. We're very close to our neighbors on one side and very generous side yard on the other side. Um. We've got three kids. We have one Jack and Jill bathroom upstairs. They're going through our room to use the bathroom. The kitchen is like an impact. It's just it's not functional. Um and we also outside, we'd love to be able to utilize our larger area that's more spacious. We'd like to kind of live on that side of the house. We feel like we live on the side where the neighbors are. Our kitchen is right there. Our patio is right on top of them. If people leave, you do this project, our kitchen will go into the other side of the property, our patio will go into the other side of the property. We'll have I think for them and for us, we'll have more privacy and outdoor space wise. Um. It's 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 really over.
Try to go from the front door to the back door and if the fridge door is open, it's obviously a group. So if it goes the fridge to the back door. Yes.
That's one thing.
Okay. Cram space?
Yeah.
Okay.
Room, we like. Take care. Um but we 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 were able to do you know. Um. We also we yeah, if we were able to do this, it would be our lifestyle, I think, would be. It's it's starting to take a toll on our on our families.
And you're fond of the neighborhood. I think you said you're fond of it.
Love our neighbors, have great set of neighbors. Um. Our next door neighbor is the the chief fireman, uh from Stennis Murphy. Um. Yeah, we've been annual block parties, we're very, love our neighborhood. A very, very fortunate family that we were. Home that has a potential for the same.
Alright. I'll be. Go with this one, we'll be a bit before the door. So, yeah. Or questions of what we've just heard before you answer, you know this. No?
Okay. So just to sum it, you're basically operating your basically correct? Kind of.
Sorry. Yeah, we just really use more space than functionality. On the five, but we bought the house, we had one.
Sorry, sorry, I. No, we're just making sure everything is going going well, so I apologize, but a little bit behind. But now.
But I still just have a couple of stuff. Very happy to have to over.
Yeah, we'll do them now, and then we'll do the profession.
Alright, we'll just keep everything moving and right. Is is there anybody in the public that cares to comment on anything that you just heard? Okay. Seeing done. Alright, so we're good. Now we're going to bring it back to sir, if you could go through the technical pieces.
You've already been sworn. Why don't you give us a little bit of your background in architecture? Where are you licensed, sir?
Okay, I I have an architectural jerk tech ninety-eight six. I got my license in eighty-nine. Might just thirty bucks here.
And your license is in good standing as you appear here to see.
Well.
Thank you, sir. Well, thank you. What was the scope of your engagement?
So my engagement with this project was basically to like you know, Claire had said in larger houses that they have. The bedrooms are are small. At Z one. Um. We did an addition here in the quiet, meaning ours actually had that. The attic space. So and it really is pretty much the larger bedroom on the floor. Uh the house, four, the four bedroomed house, four, four bedroomed, you know, the second floor. Part of that. Well, yeah, as far as that goes, uh most of the first floor in the back would say the same, same. Same, basically garage. Uh would say as is, it's sounding fairly old, part garage, that would say as is. Um. And that that's pretty much a scope of the heat. That happens basically. So as far as the work in the in the site, um as you can see, I don't know if I can tell on everybody. You have to, I believe you have to survey, right? I have to survey as well.
Yeah, first.
Yeah. You're on there, but maybe it's not as unique as it's existed with the previous. But you could have enforcement. The house is basically as old as it has developed. Um. So we're going to take advantage of of this yard, you're basically storage position to increase the size of the house and get it reset on the property. Um. And this whole this whole addition on the right side of the house is supporting other than the exterior as this um addition here, which is twenty-six point seven five, the existing period or setback right now is twenty-five to the family. Not pointing further back than it's. Um. So um as far as the variance go, we have um we have various to that period uh setback and covered porch on the left side, which is basically where we're coming into the playroom back corner of the house. That actually projects um past the bigger set back, that that's a covering porch, it's simply all the house. Getting added is is pretty configured, that's a story. As well as open garage. Story structure. He support, so gonna take advantage of they they take figuring. The roof. But the footprint's not that increased. So we're just gonna just, there are main house. Attics, unfinished attic storage space. For the property.
It's not going to be used for any occupancy, just storage, correct? Just want to put that on.
Garage, I think they believe it's about eleven. I think about letting it wide, but that's all going to stay exactly as is. This roof, this window is just there for aesthetics. Like I said earlier, the main house is basically from from here over. And we're adding this and we're balancing it.
So you're
The house.
So essentially what you're doing is you're going from an appearance standpoint. Everything you're doing is to the right in the open area.
Everything is to the right and or.
To the rear.
Yeah, except for the over on the garage, and this roof on the garage is going up about four and a half feet. It looks, it's too large. I mean, it's almost kind of still looks well, but if it if you left it where it was, it's it's well, there's a certain lines here. Um. Existing existing ridge is not a great. But the main house.
So we don't have any kind of height situation?
No, not anything.
Does the does aesthetics contribute to your design and your proposal?
Aesthetics.
Yeah.
It happens, that was really important to them. I see aesthetic of the day I could keep the house position looking with the look of it. Um. Claire, we can definitely keep flower pots. So see, they're very, pretty much symmetrical. A little bit more porch. Um. Good.
Would it be fair to say that uh what you proposed and what the applicant would like to see is uh blending in with and uh serving the streetscape in that particular area?
Right.
Time.
Blending better.
Because on the on the site itself, the whole the house itself is still going to be able to light, which is you're gonna have thirty thirty five, thirty thirty-five, forty-five.
Right now, you're at fifty-six one, right?
It looks like thirty-five point five.
Thirty-five?
Yeah, thirty-five point five.
Right on the pole. Um. Thirty-five point five, so right. And that's what we need to be in pants, so the hand side your assessment, that that line that you see that requires setback line, that's the front period at the hand side, that's that would be twenty. Right side.
If you were to move, you know, the whole proposed structure over to the right, would you be able to comply? You know, I know how it's tight to that side. I was just. Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, because it's such an odd, you know, the the existing house is obviously in a unique location to the property, you know, it's not in the center. I'm just curious. You know, if you were to move everything over to be centered like a typical new lot would if everything would um be in compliance.
Yeah. Well, if you see the first line there, it's great. Me, under a setback. So we have the base, what you were asking, I guess we have the base. Maybe everything's left at that line.
No, yeah, no, no, I'm just I'm just saying in theory, in theory, like if you had all the money in the world and you wanted to lift up the house and move it, I was just, you know, curious, just looking, thinking of the unique condition of the property.
The size of this house you can see pretty much fit in this right now.
So the side yards would be in compliance if, you know, if you got reduced that. I'm just trying to show that where the existing house is.
Exactly.
It's creating.
The hardship.
The hardship.
The hardship, that's.
Right, it's pretty much, you know, honestly, it's pretty much right within the pocket space, quite a bit, but it's it's basically right, it was it was said, the hardship is located.
Now, just to be sure, uh and get it on the record, uh the F A R requirement for this zone uh and size of the lot is twenty-five percent, is that correct?
Pretty, pretty close.
Okay, and existing is currently twenty-one percent?
Right, yeah.
Okay. So that with the proposed addition, you would be exceeding the maximum because it shows thirty percent, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So that brings you into the category uh of uh requiring a floor area uh ratio variance, which is what is called under the land use law as a D variance. Okay, and are you familiar with the parlance of the land use law and what a D variance requires in terms of a vote? Okay, that I think somebody's raising their hand. I, do you want to help him? Yeah, that would be called a super majority for five votes, five affirmative votes. We do not have five affirmative votes here tonight. Uh, no, we don't. We have. Three, right? Oh, you do?
We don't have seven, we have seven, some of them six. They can all vote.
You can all vote?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, then we do.
Yeah, we have enough to do.
You need, you need five affirmative votes, now, you're not here with counsel, but I should caution you, or at least tell you, that, um. If you don't have five votes, that variance would not succeed. Okay, and so many times, applicants and their consultants decide to defer the vote. Until the board has its full complement present that can hear the application, I'm sure that's happened here on numerous occasions. And I, I think you should know that, I don't know if you've had that discussion with a professional before arriving tonight, but you should at least know that. Because you don't want to have an application hanging by a thread and you run short by a single vote tonight, if somebody wouldn't vote out. There would be.
We have two people, two board members are absent.
Who are absent.
So if they watched and listened to the video. At the next available meeting, they would be able and eligible to vote on your application. If you feel that that's what you want, you want it available to eight members as opposed to the six members that are here.
And, and that's certainly your choice, we, we don't, it shouldn't provide, uh, advice to you as to how you should proceed. Many people decide to put in their entire case, which is what you're doing now, and we thank you for that, because you're here spending money and time and effort. With your professional to create the record, but then it would have to be carried if you are not going to a call for a vote tonight to maximize your chances by having. Seven members in their seats that can vote, as distinguished from the necessity to have five affirmative votes, because that's called the super majority. Okay? Think about it, we, we haven't finished yet, as we go around the room, but I just thought this would be a good point in time, Mr. Chairman, to. Give them something to be thinking about as we conclude testimony.
Many, many times we have people, a, as, as counsel pointed out, that they come with a planner, some people come with their lawyers, so this advice is provided on your side of it, but. I, I guess, hold a courtesy.
But here, to, to assist, it's assistance.
It's not, it's not, it's not.
We're not telling you to do it.
It's not adversary.
Right.
Okay.
Want to be helpful. Right, want to be helpful.
Oh, that's fair, that's fair. All right, what, what I would like to do first.
Yes, sir.
Is I'd like to have, like.
Yes.
Before we open up to you.
Absolutely.
All right, so.
So, I mean, if I could just maybe spend a couple minutes going through what I have in my report, just. So everyone's aware of what the situation is, so, you know, the existing property does have, uh, some existing, like. And proposal. Um, going to create some new con. So, for example, um, of the existing dwelling encroaches into the rear yard setback. The proposal isn't going to fall in that situation, it's an undersized lot. What they're doing isn't going to change the size of the property, with, with the property. But in addition to having issues with the setbacks, the proposal is going to exceed the floor area ratio, which is a D variance. And, and hardship is not one of the proofs for a D variance, hardship is generally a proof for a C variance, and. Like, the board has heard many times, and actually the previous application, they were looking for fault variances associated with the location. Of the proposal on the property, and hardship is one of the proofs for that type of deviation, but not for a D floor, floor area. Um, correct, and, you know, the floor area ratio was directly related to the size of the house, not necessarily. Location of the structure. The proposal is going to exceed the allowable gross building area, which again is, you know, related to. Size of the addition, not necessarily the configuration property. And, um, as was talked about a little bit by the applicant. Uh, you know, the gross building area triggers the enhanced side yard setback, so the side yard setback requirement is larger than it is currently existing. Some of the proposed additions is going to be located within that enhanced side yard setback on the right side, so there'll be some additional non-conformities. Uh, I'm sorry, on, on the left side of the lot, but the right side is going to conform with the enhanced side. The other thing, uh, that we noted was that, uh, you know, there's an accessory building, the shed on the property that currently is located. Too close to, uh, the property lines, and I believe as part of the application, shed is being supposed to be removed.
This side is just a suspected that we're gonna keep shed.
So, so the shed's gonna stay where it is. So the, there's another, uh, situation that's, that's not conforming, and the shed contributes to the gross building area calculation. So there's, there's a little bit more than just a, a simple, um. C variance here, it's, it's obviously a D for use variance, uh, and, and, you know, like I said before. Harship isn't the standard proof that you, you put forth on the record they carry then.
So, so one thing, as I'm looking at this plan. Right now, in the upper left-hand corner, if you could see one. The, the, there's a note there, it says new, I think it says with new shed, so that's now, that has to be modified.
Yeah, but that, that shouldn't stay.
So is the exist, is the size of the existing shed different, is it less?
See.
It's the same.
I think the chairman is asking, though.
Well, yeah.
It says existing.
Yeah, what is it?
Is it new, is it existing?
I'm having a hard time reading.
What it says.
Yeah, what is, because, what is that saying?
Then do ten by twenty, yeah.
Okay.
But we decided that the shed is. It's stacked, so if you repair, I'll let the boss, we're gonna, we'd be willing to reduce the size of it. Because it doesn't need to be twenty feet long. Too big, so. But it just needs a little bit of work, setting society to match the house, but.
But the plan is to leave it where it is.
The plan is, right. Thinking of, of changing. Rebuilding, but, or, lost.
So, the, the current shed, it's, it's on the.
Basically, like.
On the property line?
Yeah, it's pretty close to the property line. I mean, there's a fence there that's moved into the paper property, but it's, uh, basically, it's twenty-two feet. Above the property line, the rear, and it's one point seven. Point seventeen.
Where the original proposition was to pull the shed and put, make sure that it was within. The six, the six feet, if you rebuilt it, you'd pull it in six feet off the line.
So did you look into a design that met the, um, the floor area ratio that was, that's, you know, permitted? And what would that entail?
Well, I would.
Good question.
Then, that we have here are twelve, twelve seven by twelve, or. This is better, we've got, we've got to build ninety-four, twelve, we've got by ninety-six, but that we basically raised this bedroom to the floor here. Bedroom, we're pretty, at the end of the house. Now we have, these are like bedrooms. But here just, I mean, they're not like far to the bedroom, but. Yeah, and the primary bedroom, which, like, yeah. We're never gonna be able to beat the floor ratio, there's a little bit, maybe, but it'd be very dumb, like, that's very important, right? If you're able to look back, certain, the, the.
Though it's your professional opinion that even with a revisionist pen, you could not reduce. The proposed floor area ratio to comply with the maximum floor area, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the second.
Well, it's complying now.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, I was talking about the addition.
But the addition.
Right, that's what I'm talking, you couldn't scale that in.
The second point they did, we made the first floor, so, yes, I mean, even, you know, you could, I guess, to meet the code, you could theoretically, I guess, build. We made some of the first floor here and build it up on, on, which isn't the.
No.
Best thing to do.
No, understood, understood.
I think the concern is, is that you started out twenty percent below. The value, it didn't accept the value, but now you're twenty percent over it, so it doesn't appear like you're trying to comply this way, the way it comes across for us at all. Well, you went from, I'm sorry, you started twenty-four hundred, and you went to thirty-six hundred.
Hmm, I don't think so.
Okay, I agree, I'm just reading the numbers on the. Proposed is thirty-six eighty, or, or thirty, thirty-six eighty. Oh, twelve, you said twenty percent of the.
Okay, right.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, twenty percent is the, the ratio.
Correct, you're at twenty, and you're, you're currently at twenty with the ratio, twenty-one.
You're twenty percent below. The twenty-four number, and then you jump, you're basically twenty percent above the number. When I was trying to make that.
Oh, the floor ratio.
I have twenty, twenty-four, twenty-six percent. Required floor ratio. This means that twenty-six, so four percent below. Right, but. If you're going the other way, five percent, right? Well, so you start with twenty-five, you end up at thirty, so you're twenty-five percent higher, right?
That's what he means.
Yeah, he's a percentage, right, yes.
So the concern is, is that if you're just, you're just, you're just building a house as opposed to trying to mitigate a little bit, that's the concern.
So, yeah, we're just trying to, I think, understand.
We're just trying to, you know, it's. Where other things looked at.
Right, yeah.
But it sounds, all right, but, but, listen, this, you know, we have, you've been before, you know, so. Were there other options, were there other things that were looked at to try and reduce? The required, the, the needs for, for, for variances? Were there other options that you looked at?
Right, I mean, there was one thing that we discussed, and then we decided to keep it the way it is, because the garage is included. In. We have a very small garage, a house like this, it's nice to have a real, a garage, maybe two or three and a half, but we abandoned that, like, if you could go, maybe put the garage aside. But then that would increase them. Even.
Good.
So we, if it's that back, after where it was, to keep it where they are now.
So you looked at other options.
Right.
Of moving that garage.
Twenty down, on a house like this, you could keep the garage like that, but then we decided for a couple of reasons, one. Numbers in the room to the cost, and my mind, they were just keeping it.
I mean, when I looked at the plans, you know, it was one of the first things that hit me, I'm like, okay. A little hype.
We talked about it.
You know, could, I, believe me, I'm not into spending people's money, okay, but. Being, you know, what we do on the board, what other things were looked at, is.
Yeah, I mean, it's eleven thousand square foot, I know it's not a hardship, but I'm saying we have eleven thousand. Square foot, twelve thousand square foot, um, probably getting some, so eight thousand square foot or a hole, like, below. And to add the garage, maybe that much, again, so it's. And he grew like a second floor, now, they, it's now, will you, you have three children, and, and the best way to protect your four point one, they're still fully fitted. Uh, and the first floor has, you want to have, it's hard, it's, 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 it's a book for a decade, it's had that rate. It's an existing family prepared that's large, that's interesting.
I mean, the primary bedroom and the primary bath on the second floor and then the kitchen and the pantry and the office, I mean, I know it's, it's not, um, what you're proposing isn't outreach, you know, outrageously big, but I mean, they are spacious, um. If, if you reduced, you know, and brought the house in slightly and reduced the size of the kitchen or the office and just a little bit from, you know, above the same amount, could you get the floor area, area ratio that is permitted?
In, in response to the board member's question, what would it come down to if not to meet the requirement that those modifications were made?
Modification, they would be get it down to, uh, closer to eighty percent.
We're twenty, we're, we're.
Twenty-four. Would require twenty-four.
Right.
Yes.
As you were touching on it. The outside wall. I'm like, really? Coming inside, I don't think we can come in the back.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
What we were saying, um, now, if you would want to.
Just reiterating.
Reiterating about the shed, we made the shed, the garage, basically shed at this point. Go ahead.
But you can't eliminate the garage.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm, the garage is safe, I'm saving the shed.
Oh.
Yeah. In other words, if you eliminate the shed, then the garage essentially becomes your area for storage or whatever, it's like that, it's not, it's not a, quote unquote, put my car in the garage.
What is the current shed size?
Fifty-five ten.
The current shed's twenty-five ten. And then the proposed new is the same, just whole relocated.
Absolutely, yes, that's okay, hold it with the same, although we had talked after we submitted.
So. So let's say you made a by twelve, a hundred square feet shed, just to have the shed, that's a hundred square feet now in, in the positive, that's the way it's rated. Right, and then, uh, you've explored, but, you know, like, when I look at the plan, the right side addition, if you were to explore moving the right sideline in, have small pieces in the back, and you do have a very large kitchen, you have, you know, and then the space above, I think you probably could make it work, the bathroom, the bedroom, walk-in closet, it could, it could, it could move, move in. So that's two floors worth of whatever square footage you can get out of it that works, possibly even that little piece on the back, uh, the, the backside of the, of the kitchen, to get it, to try to be close, because right now it's quite excessive.
I think we're getting close, I think.
Do you have any pictures of adjacent houses, just, um, context to, you know, the neighborhood, because I know there's a lot of smaller houses and, um, you know, this is doubling the size of your house almost, um, and I'm curious, just would like to see proximity of the new addition to other houses I didn't see anywhere, um, and just in context to the adjacent. On the side where it's really close, that's the small case. And um, other side is a large, a large.
You have to look at the survey, the, the adjacent house. Five point two, look at it pretty clear. Left side.
But on the other side,
Heard two board members speak to the part of the issue here. Uh, and frankly, I believe their questions were presented to give you the opportunity to think through and maybe modify your drawings to bring you closer to compliance. That is an important thing for a land use board to take into account. Uh, so that they can say that the, if they were inclined, that the applicant made, uh, significant adjustments uh, to move the FAR closer to compliance. And therefore, given its reduction, uh, in the proposed FAR uh, to closer to what the FAR requirement is, that might be considered something the board would look on favorably. But I, I, you've heard a, a suggestion from one board member that gave you some areas to explore. If you were inclined to, we're not telling you to do it, but if you, if you're reading the tea leaves, it might be something that might help you.
Landscaping.
I mean, yeah, man, we can touch on.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Maybe as complex as we can. Yes, but some, some of the technical comments, typical comments that we discussed, we talked about, alterations and variances. To hear something about, it finishes the colors, the materials, to make sure that the streetscape viewpoint that it's going to finish with, you know, with this rounding, existing.
Yeah, it's, 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 we have a bigger color, of course.
Any, involve any floodlights or any lights that would be obnoxious. Have anyone be downlit, downlit or, or, or light saying this right now?
Would you make that representation, sir, that the lighting that will be shown on the plan that you're asking for to be approved would be downlit so as not to, uh, intrude upon neighboring properties?
Right, tradeage, Michael. No, I apologize, I'm sorry, you were talking, go ahead.
On the next one's free.
Any, any thought on any proposed landscaping and, you know, given the fact that you're old and likelihood coming back, you may want to think about that. If you don't have an answer today, there's something, something.
No.
Create the truck.
No, I don't think we're looking for landscape plan put together by a landscape market.
No, no.
Yeah, but just some kind of sense of what you may do to maybe, um, given the fact that it's, you know, a, a larger addition, to make it more appealing for the.
Yeah, we've.
Yeah, we can show that on.
Right. Um, as, as we typically do, we recommend that, that sewer connection be investigated before it's reused. That's generally done, you know, with some kind of camera, camera work, would that, would that be? That would be okay. And then, uh, four point five, you know, given, given the size of the proposal, it, it would trigger the soil, the plot plan requirements. And that review will get into the site grading and. Just for the benefit of the applicant, um, you know, we, we took a look at this from more of a contextual layout standpoint and, and the zoning requirements, we haven't looked at what may be required for, you know, for stormwater management or rating.
Do you envision, sir, any issues that they, we might be able to share with the applicant so that they wouldn't have to come back again after they made the bricks and mortar revisions to meet the floor area ratio?
Yeah, I mean, generally when we review the, the plot plans and the soil limits, we take a look at, uh, you know, the additional covers that's being proposed, uh, there's generally some kind of stormwater management system that's designed. Most times it, you know, it, uh, is designed to handle the runoff of the roof area, uh.
The, yeah, the variance.
This would be, that's correct. That's generally the way it processes, but it's, yes. But just, you know, for the benefit of your client, you know, it would be another step that would have to be worked through to demonstrate that you're not going to have any negative impact for the additional runoff, the additional impervious coverage.
Question from Roger, don't we sometimes see that?
What's that?
Don't we sometimes see that?
Sometimes, sometimes the applicant has it all together on, on the plan, but there's a number of applications that come in uh, that kind of show, it shows a line work trying to get the variance approval, they engage an engineer once the approval's obtained and the, uh, you know, the code, you know, requires the, the application be approved before you obtain a building permits, so. It, it could be a one-step process, often it's a two-step process.
I, i- if I may, okay, I've, I've been, I've been up here for some years since you're, you're likely coming back. Okay, you're likely coming back. Um. To, to maybe even have some of this stuff at the ready in a, in a, in a more. This is a, this is, this is, this is pretty complete what's here, but you're hearing what the board is asking, okay? And, and this is not unusual, any questions that we pose out there, okay, given these types of, of variation requests, okay? So, I guess, the more information that you can give this like, we're always sensitive to lights, we're always sensitive to runoff, okay? If it can get knocked out in, in now versus later on, that helps. Because when we start asking the questions anyway, and we do it, we do it on commercial and we do it on residential, this is all the line of questioning, I, I don't know if you guys have ever done this before, have you been before the board, all the questioning that is coming out right now is, I, I've heard hundreds of applications, we do the same thing. So it's not anybody being singled out, okay, um, so and we, and, and, and I personally know, I, I've driven back there on these properties, when I was moving to the town, these properties, they're small, a- and I know that they're not, you know, a lot of stuff is conforming, okay, the existing. But when we're talking about making these kind of things, more information that you could arm this board with in making your case, it helps us out, it'll help you out down the road with the work that has to be done with the engineers, okay? Because then we also get into, correct me if I'm wrong, the as-built plans.
Yeah, that'll be all we. Demonstrate that they built it with the approval.
Correct, exactly, exactly.
But that's standard.
That's.
That's S O P, yeah, standard operating, okay? So, um, I
Well, I believe, having heard what you've heard from the board members who had questions to assist you with revisiting the concerns that your variance requests are presenting, and you've heard from the board professional, uh, would you be inclined to, uh, move to carry your application, uh, to come back with revised plans? Okay, I think that's great. Uh, well, the issue here is, A, let's talk about when you can come back. When, when would they be available?
December sixteenth.
Are we, are we good for them?
Well, the.
It's tight, but.
Yeah, well, more importantly, the question is, can you get it back?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, ten days before, yeah.
It's not.
And then you have the issue of notice, will your notice?
Not if we carry it tonight, then you don't have to renotice. If we announce tonight that it's December sixteenth, you're set. If you don't announce it, then you have to renotice.
That's one, and two, the other standard is, is the public aware, uh, when we come back, is there any material change in what they're seeking, and in fact, you're seeking less presumably in terms of the variance release, so that would be a good thing, and I think we could support, uh, an opinion that you would not need to renotice, okay?
Linda, looking at, looking at the proposed.
For December?
I'm looking at the sixteenth.
Yep. It's tight.
It's tight.
Question for you, under the mechanical sections, um, other than the H VAC, do you have a generator or anything like that going in?
More, more people are putting, more, more people are putting in.
It's not, it's out, it's present really bad.
I mean, we are finding that more and more people are putting in that we have to review where they go. Yeah, as part of the overall, as part of the overall plan, like, if you're doing it for this, it would be.
I don't, I, for any new H VAC equipment, just.
Yeah. Yeah.
We just want to see where it's. You know, not.
That was, that was the reason.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um.
One of them is a conceptual for December, um, which should only be ten minutes. The other one is a modification to a resolution.
And the one before that.
And the one before that's going to take a while.
That's going to take a while.
Yep, and then we also have Ed's.
An Ed's.
Presentation before that to the public also.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, are you in a rush to, to get this done? To be heard for the second time?
Rush would be a strong word.
Okay, the, a- a- apologies, I mean, let me, you can wait, because apologies, let me ask it this way. If you were to, let's just say if you were to get approval tonight, when would you start this?
Yeah. Like, pardon.
Okay, okay, all right. That's what it is, so, so, um, how, what do we have, so we already know that we have the one that was carried to, to, to January.
It's that one and it's the reorg.
And the reorg.
And that should be it.
Yeah, the reorg's easy, okay, the reorg's.
It's just a lot of votes.
It's just a lot of votes, yeah. Um, again, if I'm out of my counsel, my recommendation to you would be, take some time, tap the brakes. The holidays are coming. Okay? Come tell us on the, come tell us in January, okay? And you will be third, basically third on the list now, I'm counting with the fact that we have a reorg, we have to go through all the, plenty of professionals, all that jazz.
Takes a little time.
It's a little time, it's about twenty minutes, okay? Um, so, and then there's one application that you already heard while you were sitting here that we were carrying, and you guys would be up, okay? And a lot of the, a lot of what you're gonna, you know, you've already touched on most of this, so it's just a modification, I have to explain what you're doing on that, so. That would be my recommendation to you. All right? That would be, I also would, um, um, it would probably. Okay, I would also recommend that you, um, include in the packet, kind of, okay, as, as you had requested, you know, we all go down the street, we, we do some upfront stuff, but it's part of the whole information that we know what the rest of the neighborhood.
State your case.
Yeah, okay.
Like.
Uh, of what's around, you know, okay, I know you have a picture here of the shed, you know, much appreciated, but like, George, your house, show us what's next to it, show us, you know, take it from the house this way, take it.
You know, what the proposed is going to look like.
Hmm, yeah. Sometimes, yeah.
But I, yeah.
To get, to get some context on.
Right.
What the name was. Yeah. And I also, you know, the board, the board is not one that, listen, we, we, we try and work with everybody, okay? So, and our professionals are here, okay, you opened up, thank you, and thank you for that, okay? Michael's here too. All right, if there's questions or, or any, okay? That. If, Michael, right, I mean, that, yeah, they can get in contact with you. Okay, it's not, you know, it's not just do everything and come before us, no, there's other people here that can help you get to the point upfront. Um, and again, you're hearing the questions of the board, and, and I agree with the council, I'd much rather see come back with revisions. Okay, and explaining things in it.
Closer to compliance is a great thing.
Right. All right.
Have a great holiday.
Want to get any comments?
Do we, um, you could, I could, I could, all right, anybody from the public here, okay, thank you.
So we're going to carry it to January, so, right?
We're gonna, we're records you to carry it to January. Okay. We have to do anything else?
All right, for the notice?
Okay.
They're going to do the new date, January.
It'll be January fifteenth.
There you go.
Okay? January fifteenth. Yeah. And as council said, to bring it closer to be.
I mean, need no extension, right, um? Linda?
No, they're just signing it.
Okay, they, okay, great, I didn't know what they were signing.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah.
We'll do that all at once, although there's a whole body of law that talks about whether or not, uh, C variances are subsumed and D variances, which are special reason variances, but we'll take it that night.
Right? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Everybody good? All right, we keep going, all right. All right, um, the next is, uh, file number twenty twenty-four dash seventeen. Uh, Michael Ma and Dana, uh, Marino, two forty-six Park Avenue, Allendale, block twenty-two oh six, lot seven, the application is for a two-car garage in the two-story addition pursuant to two seventy dash sixty-three parentheses three, two seventy dash sixty-four C parentheses two, and two seventy dash fifty-seven D. Okay, thank you, I see you here, how are you?
You're welcome.
You too?
Um, my name is Michael Mailey.
No, no, please, no, we're good.
I want anybody who's going to testify to raise their right hand, and as I administered, you, all, if you are testifying, uh, swear to tell the truth, all things and nothing but the truth in connection with this application. Thank you. Now, whoever's going to testify, who's going to start? Okay, would you, uh, then indicate your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Michael Mailey, I'm at two forty-six Park Avenue here in Allendale. Uh, we do have one other person who's going to be testifying, just stepped out of the room, so, I just wanted to like, you know, this. Um, um, with me today is Jeff Hauser, um, and John Musinski is actually my architect as well, who was here previously. Um, my wife Dana here is by my side, um, I'm a forty-year resident of Allendale, uh, my wife is thirty-plus year resident of Allendale as well, uh, grew here, uh, love the town, and pretty much anywhere else in the world, and want to continue living here, um, and put our nineteen sixteen arts and crafts home, uh, in a little bit pressure, like, um, it's small. Um, but it's warm and we love it, and we just want to improve on the exterior of it, um, in the same way that it is, same coloring and everything else, and keeping it in the sort of traditional, uh, way. Um, but we need to expand it a little bit and make some improvements. The garage is old and it's right alongside the, uh, the red one, the Allendale Brook or the Ramsey Brook, so it's not good for anybody to have it so close, so we'd like to bring that up, we'd also expand it to be a two-car garage. Um, and in doing so, because of the way the layout, we need to bump out our hedges, like, the sort of living spaces. Um, which is where the deck, which is current, um, so we are expanding the house, um, for sure, um, our bedroom upstairs would also increase a little bit. We've had original plans where the upstairs would go to the distance of the. We've had original plans where the upstairs would go to the distance of the, uh, the new living space, but we styled that back to conform with the, uh, the ratio that we're discussing a little bit, and I'd like here tonight, uh, we're very, uh, we recognize that there are those issues, side setbacks as well. Um, one side's the fact that we have a condition on would be to put a HVAC unit, uh, we don't have, uh, air conditioning in our home. Um, and so, actually, I'm sorry, that would be the generator, I apologize, yeah, the, the, the one setback on the side, it's actually just a generator. Uh, and we would like to put in an HVAC unit, which would be concealed by plantings and all these sorts of things. Uh, we've taken all that into consideration in the plans, both in the, uh, engineering plans as well as the architectural plans. Um, and we want to, um, want to be able to have people into our home, uh, a little bit more comfortably, with the in-laws who now live in Florida, um, and, um, we host a Halloween party every year, because New Street is so big, and we literally have a hundred and fifty people in our house every day, and we can't believe that. Um, we also have some damage to the home, so the, in the recent storms, we have the deck that's out there is easy to replace anyway. So, um, we are hoping to do this fairly soon, because there is some issues with the deck and things of that nature, so we are, um, uh, perhaps not on a time crunch because of the newborn being born or something like that, but we do have some issues that we would like to get to sign. Um, from an aesthetic perspective, and also a structure, that's perfect. So we, um, uh, we're here to, uh, answer any questions for you, and, um, I'm going to leave the rest to my, uh, professionals, but happy to answer any questions.
Before we get to your professionals, just, I noticed that you were sitting in the audience during the prior application, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you heard everything that was discussed by either myself, the board engineer, and members of the board regarding uh, the vote required for a floor area ratio, which is a D four variance, if you are familiar with that designation, maybe through your professionals or your own research. Okay, and so that therefore, because of what the vote is required to obtain it, uh, you should be aware that we're down two members tonight.
Understood.
Okay. Uh, that said, that means that, uh, you could certainly put in your case tonight and rely on the fact that, uh, absent board members would, if you choose not to call for a vote, uh, and enhance your percentages by having more members vote to get your super majority, uh, they would have to listen to the tape and be satisfied with what they've heard, be able to come back and vote, uh, on this application. You understand that?
I do, thank you for the explanation. Um, we have talked about it, um, we, not, uh, ourselves, um, just independently of what's necessary for that D vote, um, we hope that the, um, expert testimony will help, um, if, most explain to you why we believe those, the ratio is actually within, even though it's not conforming to the actual, uh, ratio, uh, but we do feel that you'll see why, um, it's done in a way that's and I don't know how to say it, legitimized or something.
That's certainly your decision to make.
Yes.
The board is, and its professionals are here to assist to a point, but these gentlemen and lady, uh, sit tonight as quasi judicial officials. So they are listening to the evidence in order to make findings of fact and reach conclusions on the testimony in this record. Uh, they're very kind when they ask questions to assist you to get on the record, the kind of testimony that's necessary uh, to have, uh, the kind of vote you're looking for.
Those questions are welcome.
Okay, well, that's good to hear, but you, you do understand, having sat through what you just sat through on a prior F A R, that the requirement here is twenty-five, and you're seeking thirty-eight percent. So, as your professionals testify, hopefully they will address what you've heard, as well as how you're going to demonstrate why that calculation is appropriate.
Understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, would you raise your right hand and be sworn? Name?
Jeffrey Hauser, H O U S V R.
Okay, um, I think we did swear you, so let's talk about your, your, uh, qualifications. Where were you educated and what licenses do you hold?
I earned, I earned my Bachelor of Engineering degree from Stevens Institute of Technology in Hoboken in two thousand and three. I am licensed. Started Hauser Engineering in two thousand nine. I've been in many, uh, I've been in front of many boards, I've not been in front of this board. And received as an expert in civil engineering and, and development.
And your license is in good standing as you appeared tonight and testified?
Yes.
Incidentally, do you hold a planner's license?
Sure I do, yeah.
Okay, that's fine, uh, you, you've got enough on your plate with engineering these days. Uh, okay, would you indicate what the scope of your engagement has been for this applicant?
Yes, uh, several months ago, uh, the applicant engaged me after consulting with an architect that should have polishing the existing attached garage, constructing an addition, and then new construction. Having worked with an architect before in the past, uh, soon as we discovered that property was adjacent to the Ramsey Brook, as you know, here in lovely Detroit, there are many sets of regulations, and flood hazard area regulations with G D P have become more and more stringent over the years. So before they spent any money on architectural plans or renderings or anything like that, they would apply uh, to, to look over not only the zoning elements, some of the environmental, uh, possible environmental concerns. And well, through that effort, uh, we did discover that the Ramsey Brook, uh, does have a flood hazard area elevation. So each body of water, both by FEMA and by the so, um, with that, uh, we then ordered a full boundary topographic survey, so we understood, understood all of the elevations associated with the property. What is really restricted? Flood hazard area regulation, there's really two elements to it. Everybody's familiar with the connotation, flood, I think the slight elevation, but there's another element to it called the repairing. So this, the initial focus of our investigation was housing broken in fact property. We discovered it's not a category much which could require a one hundred and fifty foot repairing zone, type of property, rather only a fifty foot. Uh, and we did discover that, uh, flood elevation on the property does come up quite a bit, and, um, I don't think you have this planned, so I'd like to introduce this as an example, whatever number you want to call it, A two.
Well, I believe frankly, it would be A two, would it not? Or would it be A one? Okay, 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 A one.
So this is called N J E P.
Surfy May, but just, if you wouldn't mind, please, just so we keep everything for the record. Thank you. Yeah, anyway, that's, as long as it's marked there, one. Thank you.
So this is called N J E P flood hazard area F A R verification. Essentially, what we're doing is, uh, we took the existing survey, uh, and we're highlighting the elements that apply to flood hazard area, I'm just going to point out a few things uh, pertaining to the flood, then we'll get into some of the zoning elements as well. So, uh, on the northwest side of the property is the Ramsey Brook here. Right? And actually, the property line is right down center. Um, fifty feet off the edge of the, the bank of this brook is our repairing, so we're pointing right here. Okay, everything from this side to the brook, all disturbances associated with this property are made in some fashion. There's a number of different levels of permits you can get, uh, to, to do different activities. But you can see here that this, uh, attached garage right here is entirely within the repair. Okay? There's also, uh, a floodway. Floodways where more rapidly moving water, uh, occurs during flood events. This is from the FEMA map, this is the floodway, limit of the floodway, which goes directly through that intention.
And, and if I may ask, that is called out drawing number one, it's on, it's on number one in our handouts. Okay.
This is just a little
Yep, no, interesting.
Okay, and we also add, again, the Department of Environmental Protection did their own flood study. Right? They determined the flood elevation, um, was at elevation two sixty-seven point two, which follows this line, we're on point eight. Um, really close to, to Park Avenue, down across the driveway, basically intersects the existing dwelling, goes around and comes out the other side over here. There is also FEMA study that was done, slightly different. FEMA study determined the elevation was, flood, flood elevation was two sixty-six point nine, which, um, isn't quite, uh, isn't quite as high, falls a little bit outside it. FEMA numbers are what's used for flood insurance purposes, you can see that line actually does not counter the house at all, and that's why, uh, they still have flood insurance. Right down to the workshop. Now, what happened a couple of months ago, um, the D E P changed their regulations, so these are the flood elevations, but they said if you wanted to develop an auto property, you could do, you could, if it's a state study, like the Department of Energy, your design flood elevation, that elevation plus two. Or if you use the FEMA number, it's FEMA plus three.
Right.
So, now we've delineated our new design flood elevation that we have to do all our permitting for at elevation two sixty-nine point nine, which is all the way up here, comes around, intersect through the house, and wraps around on this. So from a regulatory standpoint, all any activity below that elevation, uh, requires permits from the Department of Environmental Protection. So, there's three levels of D E P permitting, but activities, there's something called a permit by rule. Smaller projects, usually exempt, you don't have to do any. Um, just as long as you don't cross a threshold, if you know that you haven't, if anybody asks you to report that, so maybe you have a small addition, sometimes they're eligible for that, maintenance activities, things like that. Then there's a general permit, which is slightly larger, uh, thresholds, and lastly is an individual permit. Uh, after we've had all this information, we understood what the applicant wanted to do from an addition perspective. We consulted with the D E P, had a communication, they advised this project has desired one to individual permit. So, um, we, we, in addition to seeking variance relief for this proposal, we also have to go to the T P uh, to get flood hazard area verification to, we applied for this, this, that I produced here has been submitted to the D E P, they're going to review it. Oh, we split it about a month ago, so hopefully within two months, we're going to have confirmation that our analysis here is correct. On top of that, the individual permit application that is, uh, for our proposed activity, which we also filed with an understanding that takes about three months as well, and we're really hoping if results are favorable, so this has presented for some variation of it, that we'll be able to, uh, catch up with the D before they approve, that were denied in application. So there is a timing element to this. So, that said, uh, we really wanted, we had to propose, keep everything outside the flood. There's, there's no real circumstances from the D E P's perspective that they want things in the floodway. This very extreme circumstance. We also want to be outside the repairing. So, when we were designing this, that those were our main features. Uh, fortunately, uh, for our analysis of saying, leaving the design flood elevation, said elevation two sixty-nine point nine, first floor of the house, then elevation two seventy-three, so you know a little bit more than three feet of leeway in terms of where the first floor is and what the flood elevation is. You're allowed to build, construct additions within the flood hazard area, provided that the first floor lowest occupied floor, which in this case is the first floor, is above that flood. Um, getting into proposal itself, back to our main plan here, um.
And the plan you're referring to is on file with the application and is part of the application.
And this was a, this is called zoning plan, we initially did this, just to file a zoning permit, we anticipated denial and understood we so, uh, what we proposed is, um, an addition here with the first floor left, even with the current first floor of the house. And then a garage floor that stepped down quite a bit, um, the addition of the living space is going to be above costs. So that when a flood event does come, and now, keep in mind, we're very conservative in how the D E P is describing a flood event, if it does flood all the way up here, I think they're trouble, but they're protecting our, like, five hundred feet. Um, that, the flood waters that are going to occupy, that occupied space right now aren't going to be in peace. Uh, similarly with the garage self, obviously you can't elevate a garage, you have to get a vehicle into it. So the garage is set lower, that'll be designed to be flood resistant structurally, but also have flood, flood vents to allow the flood event to come in into it, won't cause hydrostatic pressure, floodwater's come in and get out. Um, we also propose a small deck off the back, small deck, decent sized deck, that, that deck is eligible for something called perify rule that I mentioned before from the D E P. Uh, we're within the threshold of that. Um, with the addition itself, from a zoning perspective.
And the patio?
And, and a patio, patio is a hundred and twenty seven square. Okay, um, what we're trying to do in this is, is keep a bunch of our proposed activity within the pre-existing disturbance. You'll notice the patio is basically kind of within the gar- the garage area, we had to get in their demo, but it's actively disturbed, it's determined um, for, for the land that's not virgin or regrown. Uh, from a zoning perspective, uh, this is an undersized lot. Zone A residential zone requires twenty thousand square feet of area, we're just over eleven thousand square. It's about fifty-five percent of what the size of the front, of the property, the zone is required to be. The zone does require, um, fifteen foot side yard setbacks, fifty foot rear yard setback, and, um, thirty-five foot front yard setback. Uh, the existing house itself already has existing un-conformities for the front yard setback and for the side yards. Uh, we said, uh, we're not modifying anything with the front yard setback, front of the house is to remain exactly the same. Uh, where, on the northern side here, um, currently, the house is at twelve point one feet from the side yard. Uh, the addition, we decided to bump it in a little bit, we didn't want to encroach any closer, we want to maintain that, so the addition that goes back about sixteen feet is going to be twelve point two from the side. Trying to maintain. Um, on the other side, the garage itself, again, side yard setbacks for the zone fifteen feet, we're at fifteen point five. Now, there is an enhanced setback, setback within the zone that's a product of the size of the house. Uh, so with, with this proposed addition, um, enhanced setbacks actually become twenty-five point two uh, feet each, so we're, we're, we're standing on both of those setbacks. Uh, the reality is with only a ninety-foot wide lot, that's another existing non-conformity, you'd only have a forty-foot sliver on the property to construct the house and a garage, and that's just not a problem. Two, two other physical improvements that we're, we're proposing here, um, and this ties into both zoning and the flood hazard area is mentioned the air conditioning unit, house, current house doesn't have an air conditioning unit. Modern homes now, even air conditioning, uh, we propose that on the northern side here. Uh, there was a lot of deliberation amongst the applicants, myself, the architect, uh, where this is the most appropriate place. Mechanical equipment has to be above the design flood elevation, okay? Uh, we're already in a situation where we're requesting a rear yard variance. Uh, we were hesitant to put it in the front of the house. Uh, the northern property on has a good natural, um, screening with landscape. So the combination of the fact that this is the highest and driest area on the property, uh, the natural grade there is only, it's less than a foot below the design flood elevation, so we would have a minimal platform for, for the equipment. Um, it's away from the brook, it's away from the backyard. One of the nice features of, of a brook is the sound of a brook, right? Don't necessarily want to hear the sound of a brook in an air conditioning. So, we want it as far away as possible, uh, we felt that this is the most appropriate solution. Um, we also proposed a generator, similarly, it's been Um, we also proposed a generator. Similarly, it's mechanical equipment has to be high dry above the flood elevation. There was no ideal spot. Um, but we felt very comfortable putting in uh on the south. Uh, western corner of the existing house. On a slight platform, there's already some natural landscaping there. We're gonna obviously hide it. Nobody wants to drive up and just. See a generator, so we'll put a lot of plantings around that, so aesthetically disappears. Um. Overall, this, this project is resulting in a slight increase in impervious coverage. Um, through the demolition of the existing garage. Expansion, I believe, might uh. About I. Six or seven hundred square foot increase in impervious coverage. Uh, to compensate for that, uh. We proposed stormwater drywall. Uh, and then it do expand the drive order to facilitate vehicle maneuvering into this new two car garage. Slightly wide in the driveway here. And in the corner of it, we proposed the drywall with a grate. Uh, these plans are not fully complete yet. We would add some uh piping from the downstairs of the addition to run to that as well. Uh. But overall, from a drainage perspective. There's minimal grading that we're doing, part because it's regulated by the DEP. We can't add fill to the, to the, under your flood out uh zone. And um. The drainage patterns will pretty much maintain of the property. And we'll have zero debt runoff as a result of our proposed stormwater improvements. Uh, utility wise, we intend to maintain the same existing facilities, public sewer, public water, electric, gas. Uh. Overall, uh, a, a lot of deliberation went into this. Concept, there was multiple iterations back and forth over several months. Um, architects speak more to the layout of the house itself. Uh, I think that what they, they mentioned before, we had a larger structure here in terms of the, the submission was. Formerly presented as a two-story addition, we reduced it down to one, once we realized where the floor area reached, you know, us. Excited to reduce it down. Um. In this neighborhood, uh, there's similar sized houses. I don't have the exact. Dimensions of the house or the square footage, just looking at aerial images, it's pretty close. I will say there's another unique aspect to this lot itself. It's not the lot, but the neighbor's lot, okay? The neighbor's lot is an L-shaped lot that comes around. So the house is situated behind on the other side of the brook. So where the bulk of our, I'll say um. The, the neighbor that would be most affected by what we're doing here would be to the side, okay? But the reality is all that is right here is a driveway to a bridge that crosses over to the house in the back. So there, there's minimal impact in terms of approaching uh that neighbors where they would be occupying space and. Entertaining people or, right? All they're really using is a driveway. So um. That's why we, we ma- we maintain the, the fifteen point five foot. Um, from the side door setback there with an understanding that it is still a variance, but we want to stick with the. Maintaining the fifteen foot initial. From the zone. And really to get, have a two-car garage on this property. The only way to do it is to have the, the garage face forward. Can't have a side loading garage. It would cause more disruption. Uh, again, keeping in mind that's, there's environmental constraints here. So. That's really, if you could already get a two-car garage on this property, that's the only way to make. Uh. From that standpoint, infilling here, uh, buy this six foot bulk out of the house. Um. Not an enormous amount, not affecting anybody else if we didn't have this here. Again, a good natural uh existing screenings here, the house to the north is further away. Uh, there's, there's a good, I don't know if you have the exact distance, but they're, they're further away with their driveway, their detached garage. On the other side of the house, basically. So most of their activity is away, so it's good natural privacy here. Um. From, from a hardship perspective, uh. It's an undersized lot, for, for the C1 perspective, undersized lot, uh, justifies. Side yard setback variance, rear yard setback variance. Um. The benefit to the community here, uh, we are removing an older. Detached garage that is literally in the flood. We're moving it for environmentally friendly, safer. If a flood event came. And that detached garage ended up getting washed out, it could, it could be so hard to the public wherever ended up. So. We're gonna put in a new. Modern garage that's been designed to stand hydraulic pressures. Uh, structurally handle it, let the flow through, and it'll be in conformance with all flood requirements and FHA requirements. Um. From the floor area ratio perspective, I know hardship is not a justification for this. But the reality is, I don't think there's any adverse impact uh to anybody. Here. Uh, it, it's a modest house. If this house was on a conforming lot. The allowable floor area is forty six hundred square feet. But we're, uh, we're at forty two hundred square. So I know hardships are an element to it, but uh the house isn't oversized for the zone. The, the, the lot itself for this. Other reasons. Um. When they can, or they go to, there's a lot of privacy here. We're not adversely impacting them. We're not approaching any closer. There's a brook here, actually the house behind us, this is their garage doors back here. So we're not really affecting their outdoor living at all. And on the side here, uh, driveway itself. Uh, again, it's just the people driving by. They're gonna see structures slightly closer than the old attached garage. That, that get that, so. Um. You know, I, I, I think there's minimal impact to the neighborhood and the surrounding properties as a result of this. And it's a safer uh situation than the current one, and it's considerable. Do you have any questions for me? Or more than happy to answer. If Michael has. And I know I wrote, I read through his report. I have no issues with anything in this report. We'll be able to. I think one of the topics was lighting and landscaping. They touched on the landscaping. We will provide shrubs, foundation, plantings, aesthetically to my clients' benefit to do that. To the neighborhood's benefit to do that. Uh, from a planning perspective, uh, it's gonna be typical residential lighting. Uh, nothing will be shining out bright floodlight, floodlight, or anything like that. Just natural lighting around the building itself. Then apply for a sort of open application and.
Um. Before, before I have to ask questions.
So.
Please, relative to all.
I mean, they're here, you know, for zoning issues. This property is constrained by a lot of environmental issues. And something that you may want to consider is, you know, the, the proof for a D4 variance is whether. The site can accommodate the proposal, notwithstanding the fact that they can't meet that floor area ratio. I mean, they put together an, an engineer plan and filed permits to the DEP to address the. Environmental constraints that are probably more restrictive and, and pose uh. More constraints on the property than, than the floor area ratio and, and the zoning down. So I, I, I think, uh. You know, there's a lot of unique aspects in this piece of property. Uh, I, I don't think the. The, the big issue from my perspective is really zoning. I think it's environmental constraints and. You know, that'll be in the hands of the DEP, but it seems that they made a, a good effort to try to. Remove things that are in the uh existing worst locations and post things that are in. You know, possibly better locations. The one question I do have is the uh, the two platforms that you're proposing for the mechanical equipment, are the, are those attached to the? The building? They'll be like decks or they're gonna be freestanding?
Wherever they're at, they'll be freestanding.
They'll be freestanding.
If it was any higher, it would probably. Can't leave it off the building, but it's. Right? But we're, we're literally only six inches off the ground.
Just, just enough to get it above the. Regulated.
Michael, can I, uh, before you go further? Maybe I'm not understanding something here. It hasn't been a great effort putting this whole thing together. I thought I heard you say. Maybe you back it up that. Whatever we're doing here, all of this could be negated. If the DPP comes in, maybe I'm paraphrasing the phone, right? DP comes in and says, no way.
But it's, yeah, I mean, that, that's an outside agency that has regulatory authority over a lot of this piece of property. And they have to, you know, submit the application and, and get their, to do that. Now that. I mean, I, I'm, I'm guessing you're wondering why they're here.
So I'm kinda like wondering, am I doing this backwards now?
It, it's up to the applicant and, and, you know, how, how they want to proceed. Now, these, these are. Outside agency approvals that we don't have control over. We don't have the authority to say, you have to go get that approval first before you come to us.
We opted to kind of do it simultaneously, understanding that either agency created or. And it is, it's, it's sometimes variance might be a greater risk than, than the DPP. We feel pretty confident about what we put here for here. Maybe get it approved, but ultimately they have to review. If, in the event, you're fortunate enough to get a favorable vote on this application. And. The DEP came back and said he needs to make a change, depending on the nature of that change. I can't see the change being uh standing on any variances or, or, must they here, can I? Anything like. Turn that down.
What's the possibility exists that you have to come back and force?
There is that, there is that possibility.
Yeah, I mean, the DEP, you know, mandates in order to get the permit, you know, you need to do X, Y, and Z, and that's a material change to the plans that. The applicant presented to the board. That, you know, there's a possibility that they may have to come back.
It's the same thing we discussed with uh, with Wes Gresson.
I guess the other thing I, I want to point out, you know, there's not a. You know, the, they're proposing a, you know, what looks to be a very, you know, usable two-car garage. Full area region, the most building here. We don't see that uh. Regularly in a lot of applications, but it seems like, you know, this particular application is proposing a functional. Real, real garage that, you know, could accommodate.
And then with the garage, there's all this room, all the. And um, it doesn't. Obviously, it's smaller there, but that's contributing.
What if it was just a one?
Right.
What if it was just the one parking? I mean, you guys, you know, you sat, you guys sat already, you heard us. As I said, we're not seemingly anybody out here or anything like that, but you heard the questions, the previous one. It's gonna be a secondary questions, you know, what, yeah, what is? Okay.
Don't get a lot of one parkerages.
Agreed. Agreed. Yeah, agrees. But.
Future potential. But yeah, that's.
Um. The other, the other thing that's standing out for me. Um, and again, as I've said, there's, there's people on the support that have been here a long time, but I've been doing this for some time. I don't ever recall. Seeing an application where a generator. An HVAC equipment is towards the front of the process. Okay. Perfect, thank you. Okay. But isn't that house, that house kind of weird in the middle of parking balance? Is it? It's. I'm sure that's a, that's a corner property. Or sort of corner property. Yeah, sort of corner property. Um.
Alternative generator location we were contemplating was on the side of the garage here.
Mm-hmm.
But that would just. Create another variance. Or in it, that would be definitely two foot above. And it would have to be, be elevated up, the hoop open high sword, because we have to get it up above the. We had no, we can't, I mean, see the garage doors would be here. This interior area is entryway, so trying to hide it. And that's why we felt like that was the most appropriate. Uh, I mean, I guess if there, we could put it over here next to the DC. We're, we're trying to break it up a little bit, but not just all the cannonman, but like I said, I feel pretty comfortable with the time. They don't want to look at it, have a generator.
Yeah, we definitely don't want people to see that.
I don't disagree with you with that respect. How close is the house to the north? You, you made a comment that the, um, that the house, there's a buffer between the house north of.
Currently, the house is twelve point one feet from the.
From the property, like the other house. Oh, it's.
It's probably about thirty, forty feet away from the property, like.
There's a dense row of trees there.
It's a, a, very large and tall, uh, much of course, yeah.
Michael, I interrupted you. Was there something else? I, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Uh, I mean, I. I get, well, here, the architect, but I, I just wanted to also point out that, you know, they don't, they're not asking for a height variance. They're proposing a height that's basically at the limit. So if there's some deviation. Due to unforeseen circumstances or construction. Related issues, you know, we're expecting if this was to be approved, the height, the ASB height to be the required. Just so everyone's.
Well, the, is the existing um height of the, your existing house, it's gonna remain, the new addition's gonna match that, right?
Correct.
And it's only increase in height because.
It's out the back, right? But it's, it is, is being proposed as.
Right.
And we've taken, we've taken that into consideration in various other applications. You know, a property slipped towards itself, itself, not about, got a little sleep over there. Um. You guys, I, I just. I guess for, for the benefit of the board and my own questioning. Um. What do we have? Floyd or Sandy or whatever?
Yeah.
So, so just for historical purposes briefly, you know, what happened? Like, what did you guys get? What happened?
I can tell you, because I took video of it all. Um, we have, the garage itself has a stone foundation, and then there's plat- um. Board, I guess that goes up beyond it. The highest it's ever gotten was no further than the stone. So it's never come up to the foot itself on the property. It's only hit the stone foundation of the garage.
And then you'd say that's two feet off, not far off the ground, right?
Yeah, oh, it's, uh, it's up spot, spot, it's closer to the, to the front of the house. It's very little.
Yeah.
Um, and, and the highest part is probably.
And the highest part being the part closest.
Closest.
That's, that would be pretty close to what FEMA said.
So it's never gotten to your deck, your existing deck.
And it's, it's never even come close to the other side because how, I don't know, I can't speak to this from a, from a real way, but. Um, the flow of the river goes away from the house actually, so it kind of goes around this way and then around, so it doesn't even. Come up to the left side of the property, uh, beyond to the left side of the garage. It's never come up that way if you can. Which is like. Flood area. Never.
Because I have to admit, when I looked at, you know, when I looked at the plans, that was first.
Yeah.
One of the first things, because I know ceiling was, I mean, it's not necessarily relevant to your property, but I know that thing goes a little bit down behind the ceiling.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so that's why we're here.
Yeah.
Trying to do all this point. Uh, we're, uh, the property is considerably higher than any of the neighbors in, in the area, actually, the, the. People down the river or across the way.
People down the river or, uh, across the way are far lower than our, than our.
Some neighbors contacted me after I set out notifications, hey, have you get this permits? That's it, uh, you're, you're out of luck, I can't help you on this one, there's more than a problem.
They picked a high spot.
And the properties you refer to, some, again, I'm. Or towards the south. Will be considered towards the south. You're, you're questioning our engineer at this point, correct, asking him for his. Um, that's correct.
I, man, I, I don't really. I mean, I, I listened to the testimony and familiar with the flood hazard regulations, there's. What I heard seems to be consistent with my understanding of the regulations and applications filed. All the way to your back.
Which I, they definitely said they have ninety minutes.
Yeah, but they tell you on the eve, the demon even complete.
Now they're trying to withdraw.
So that starts the clock or withdraw, correct, you've got that right, you know they're in.
And, and, you know, the regulations have gotten much.
Yeah, since July of. All right, board members. Anything for my. Anything for the witness? Public, anything? Seeing none, bringing it back. And we have another one. Uh, yeah, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, John Musinski is my architect, um, and, uh, he can speak to any questions that you may have regarding the actual layout of, of the addition. Uh, thank you, thank you.
Okay, um, sir, we've qualified you immediate prior application, so. Nothing has changed regarding your good standing with your license, is that correct? Okay, that's terrific. And the scope of your engagement connection with this project?
This project that I was hired.
Well, certainly that, that would be helpful. I think the threshold question. That you wanna be thinking about with your client is the reconciliation of environmental constraints. And the zoning consideration here. Uh, with respect to the primary variances, which is the FAR. Reconcile them if you can, and if not, tell us with respect to the FAR standing alone. Why you think it's, can be accommodated?
At the end, they are the existing garage, the detached garage that was demolished, and the detached garage. The site, as you, as you see, is restricted on that, on that side, or is there another detached garage? We're pulling the garage forward. So detached the garage, that would be good way to get the, get it out of the square area. Garage is basically five, not that we want to do that, but the garage is basically. Garage itself is not oversized, typically we design a house, we design a car garage twenty-four by twenty-four, this twenty-two by. Fine, so it's, it's good, but it's not like oversized, nice size. Um, it is attached, therefore we have to include six hundred square feet, it's a gross building area, that bumped it up. You have a bonus space on the second floor, including everything. In the square footage, there was an area that was, that did not have a whole construction code, plus it's a. Including the entire bonus room, which is five hundred twenty square. Basically, uh. For eleven hours per week, for the garage. Um, that's a big part of. Position of the area, the gross building area is sort of, yeah, big part. As far as the house itself. You know, like I said, it's a nice. So some of the, 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 are smaller, modest, the big. Position of the back of the home. Again, the challenge was for elevating it. For the, for the, for the requirement of what the, um, elevation, um, it's gonna be built on. Uh, we have different levels here, there's a big challenge, it should be. Lowest elevation, probably, um, two foot above foot elevation. Uh, so we had a lot going on here just to get this work as it is. The second floor, uh, the, the addition is basically just increasing the, uh, the, the house. Effectively by seven feet from back, increase the mass of the bedroom. Existing bath is quite small, if you can see on the upside there, second floor plan. It's a, it's a small master, so gonna increase that, um, on a size, things now, that. Uh, the bedroom will be fifteen six by fourteen six. The size of the, the closet, like I said, the seven foot addition of the garage of the house. And then basically. That, like I said, let the harness thread feed, it's the garage and the bonus room, it's the repeating base, three feet there, the. Need of the gross building area is basically the source of second floor.
Yeah, I mean, I think your, the interior layout is very modest, you know, there's nothing extravagant about. The sides of your kitchen or your living room or anything. I think it's, um, just the garage, and I think whether, correct me if I'm wrong, whether it's detached or attached. Still floor area. So I don't think that's. I thought, um, on your, or on the engineer's plan. Yeah, what it was included, which is twenty-one point three. Right, but, and then twenty-five is permitted. Twenty-five, I read on, is that right? Okay. It just, in the document, I think I saw. Which is, if you made it, theoretically, if you made it a one car garage, would you even, would you apply with the? Four, you know, twenty-five or so prevented.
Which would bring you at what compared to the, where you're proposing?
It took about twenty feet of the garage.
Well, we get a one car garage.
It takes down to thirty-five from thirty-eight.
But then if you took it down to a one car. Then you wouldn't, you'd still do the bonus room. Cause then it would kinda look.
It's not something I've. Calculated yet, um, it would be very much smaller, it would be positive. Better bear, that in a town of three or four of them.
The house is relatively deep.
I didn't hear the word, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's deep, and the garage is set back to, see, all you see from the street is this. And the garage, existing back here, moving up here basically.
A two car garage with a modest addition, the back of the house, not really visible to our neighbors, invisible from the street. Then it's a narrow lot, undersized lot. Existing house is already pulled forward, existing front yard setback. Putting on. Mentioned the modest additions. That's one story for the bulk of it, only two stories and seven feet of excess. I experienced, if you're, if you're many boards, I know I'll nails a little bit different, but the two car garage is pretty standard. I do believe this property is kinda common. It's got a location that we physically building.
He said that the, uh. Developed property, we, we took left of the. Houses, the driveway?
Yes, and beyond.
And then beyond that is, um, and the neighbor's located on the other side of the road. Two car garage, although it's adding to the gross building area and contributing to the floor area ratio. Located close to any developers, neighbors' houses.
And it's on, there's no development, that is to the other side of the driveway.
So there's, it's basically open, open space on that side of the road.
I, it's the same, that's, that's kind of where I was ending up. It's the same discussion that we just had an hour ago. What else could be done? Bring it closer. Uh, I mean, council asked that in the, the last application. You guys, everybody heard what's called, everybody heard this thing, it's not like we're reinventing the field here, we, you know, coming after it.
There's no, no doubt about it, and I think part of the difference perhaps in our application. We did go through iterations, and I, and I know you haven't seen those. We had full sixteen foot, that two story addition. That we reduced potentially to become more.
The property itself, um, or the addition of, is really expanding half of the garage. It's, it's not, it's, we're not developing a two car garage, we're adding a half of a garage. Um, and then the space above that would have to be something anyway, there's no, there's. It's, it, we're not expanding the, on the scope of that.
We've also been shrinking. So, though, you didn't see that process because we didn't just put forth all our wishes and hopes. Uh, this app, we can hire professionals, they'll guide, and I could say, in advance, let's, let's turn this down. Let's give ourselves a better ship chance, understanding your needs, the limitations of the drive rate.
I think the concern that we have, if you wanted to say yes, if we create precedent. And essentially that precedent will be effective for every described, and that's why we're, that's why we have the number. This is what we're paid, this is what we're paid.
There's, there's the theoretical precedent, and then there's the practical precedent, and I think the board member is making an observation. Uh, for all applicants to consider, while we know what the law tells us that no two properties are alike and. No two applications therefore should be considered, uh, identical, each has the rise and fall on their own merits. The fact that the board member is pointing out that, that, that there's a fine line between the theoretical and the practical. Is, is quite evident here. And, and, and I think that's what might be on that board member's minds, as well as others, I don't speak to the board, but that's the. That's the conflict, the conundrum that we've gotta work through.
I believe that there's some precedent, right, supporting, uh, even as close as it works out. There's a two car garage and addition above it that was added to the house. Right in between, um, uh, the Erie Bridge and the other, um. With the road going up to the firehouse, that is smaller robbery than ours, and is definitely on larger piece. And I'm sure if we research that closely, we'll see that there's precedent. And I'll look for others to do that as well.
I think they did a detached garage towards the back of it, that we're talking about the same house.
And I'm not trying to call anybody out. There are precedents that helps for our cause, in addition to ones that this may carry forward, and I do appreciate that. Uh, but I do think that this is a reasonable.
What is your plan of D P says no to your application?
Well, start, start with scratch. Um, you know, if, if, it depends on what they mean by saying no, I think that's really the answer, because if they say no up into a certain point, then we can scale things back. If they say no, you can't do anything, then that's a whole other.
Where are you on the D P time plot with your submissions?
About a month in.
You're a month in, okay. So you've got a little time to go, a couple of months.
But we did, we did provide concept plans and forward to them before we filed out. I'm afraid when said, this is approvable and. Cause I was trying to get out there.
Now, are these the same plans that you submitted to D P or are they variants or one of the other?
Well, they, the D P only saw the footprint, they don't care what happened on the second story. Uh, but since that discussion, this. This, yeah, from, previously the addition was full sixteen, yeah. So we stopped that down, took, uh, full nineteen off of that over the. Which didn't reduce.
Sounds like a ridiculous question, but do they know you're here?
They don't get involved.
Uh, exactly my point, and so that's why I think. Questions are being asked about which should have come first, the chicken or the egg, you know? I have to be honest with you, it's first, a confusion.
I felt like I had, I had some confidence.
Here?
No, no, no.
Oh, there, okay, yeah.
No, no, no. But, of course, any board, it grant approvals with condition, assumption is the condition would be. Secure, appropriate D P, but as.
Of course.
That was our mindset. And we, we timed this, that, once we knew we were gonna get here for this hearing, we filed so that it could potentially. And we we timed this stuff back, once we knew we were going to get here for this hearing, we filed so that it could potentially. I I think my client's position is that. There's not really much we can whittle away from here. I understand the board members like this to see what all went away, but understands because that's been typically how things have been. As I testified to, we kind of went through that process internally. Is there uh any board members, there are particular, now they would like to reduce slide? Is there a potential for a straw poll if somebody could look this?
I I don't think they'd be, I I speak to the chair or any member, but typically, we don't take straw polls in the middle, it's middle of a. Quasi judicial proceeding, that's number one, uh, for obvious reasons. Imagine we're being judicial, we're hearing evidence and we have to make findings and rulings on the evidence, okay? Uh, so I don't know that there'd be that inclination. But that's up to them, they can decide themselves whether they would or wouldn't. Um, and on the point of where you started from, that's all well and good, but we didn't know where you started from. With your initial and then subsequent plans, we're seeing what we're seeing as a snapshot at present time. And so, you know, you can start and ask for the moon, but, you know, again, it all comes back to reconciling what you're proposing.
Unfortunately, lots of times I do advise my client, ask for more, so we have a concession. You know, that we could give something back towards, eh, we don't need this big guy yelling, we can scale back, but here it's such a, it's such a small undersized lot. They had the needs for the addition and the two car garage, and there just wasn't much more to. So let's let's put more, what we can do, what we think we can get approved by the D E P. And hopefully uh we're favorable on our efforts.
I think I understand your argument, but again, I don't know where that will take the board in its deliberations.
We're we're just throwing some ideas out here in case we do not ask for a vote tonight, if we do want to. Would items like uh additional showing where the landscaping. With perhaps professional planning testimony.
Well, look, I, I, you know.
I I, no, 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 please.
Every venue just about. Uh, and I don't move anymore, even with a porch addition, without a planner if I need a variance. Because you you place a very difficult burden on a board. Even with proficient uh professionals who've been to the rodeo and understand what proofs are required. And this is in the hierarchy of variances. An extremely important variance because it's in the D category, it's just the, you know. It's right there with the use uh and height that exceeds the maximum height, et cetera, you gotta, you gotta D variance. And I frankly always am surprised that one can go forward without a planner on such an important variance. Even though you guys are doing a a very professional job at indicating what the factors are. But it's the opinion that a planner renders. You're pointing out the physical issues that should be taken into account, but I got to get to the next step. And that is typically provided by a planner that says, in my professional planning opinion. I believe that the reasons are justifiable and there's no substantial detriment to the publichood and no impairment. Of the master plan and zoning ordinance, that's what they said, that's what they must say to carry today to the applicant, that's the law.
Can I have two minutes of my client?
Certainly.
We heard the board's concerns, um, and we understand your position. We are going to ask to carry this hearing to another next available time. And in turn, what we're going to do, we're going to revisit, see if there's any other areas that we can possibly reduce. In addition, we are going to advocate well higher professional planner. To take a look at this from a regional perspective, provide proper and special testimony supported on the application. So do assuming that's the finding, so. We have a little bit of time here, and we have probably two to three months on the D E P level, we heard, I know your 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 hearings are starting to fill up. So uh. Hopefully uh we can.
But it's probably going to be February.
Yeah, I I we understand that.
In the uh, two two quick questions, in the event, um, we do not modify the architectural plans significantly. In terms of aesthetics, it's just footprint and that, would you need the architect to reappear or to provide testimony?
Don't don't make us prejudge that, I think that'd be uncomfortable for us because then you. Well, you'll have to decide, and you have given us the plans, and our professional will tell us, you know, as he has, as he has. Uh, testimony is required regarding, and that will tell you whether or not the architect has to come back. That I think would be the most help we could get, you may not, but.
There there's there's a, there's a potential here, or we don't make any changes and we just come.
Plus, you also have two other board members that could be here, that could review the video and could have questions. And if he has a question for the gentleman.
Exactly, that's an excellent point.
Yes.
Welcome.
So likely, likely it's February. Because again, I don't want, I I also, no, no, but but you know, the port typically, I'll stay here all night, I don't care. But I have to respect everyone, okay, I have to respect everybody else, okay? So, um, and they are filling up, there's some, there's, there's things that we have. And then of course, definitely, you definitely heard, this stuff we have to be relative to account itself, it's not just what's here. Okay, so that's a big, that's a big component of what we also have to get done. Also give you more time with D E P.
Exactly.
As well, so.
Yeah, there is a chance we might hear back here with, before we approve the papers. But we would just have to go back to bottom, if we're that close, we have to make that decision whether to draw.
I I I have a question similar related to this, if we chose to go on to the January one and got bumped. But I'm I'm trying to make it so that we could get onto the February one, or do we have to just go to the February one first? Um, and then reapply and.
We don't have to, we don't have to.
We don't have to, okay.
But in my opinion, in my opinion. I would recall that you go to February.
Okay.
Only because I I don't want to start, because because you know what, if you were to say to me, hey, I'm going to bring support, you know, I would say, listen, we gotta, we gotta push it out. You know, legally, whatever has to go on, we better push it out, because it's not, even if you have people in the audience, we can't have them here. I said, I'll stay here until whenever, but I I have to be respectful of people, and we generally try not to call people. Ten fifteen, ten thirty, absolutely, because it's just not fair.
Again.
And they have to come back anyway, because they got to answer questions for the for the audience, especially on a bigger application.
Yeah, and February makes sense.
But I also want to make sure that you understand that I'm not being rude or pushing you out, it is what it is.
So you agreed to February twelfth then?
You'll sign a form that the secondary is going, the administrator is caring.
Well, I thank everybody for their time, thank you so much.
Listen, very nice. Yes, yes. Difficult issue, thank you.
I mean, one thing I'd I'd like to just mention is I appreciate the fact that you have existing floor plans that are proposed.
Yeah.
Because it it it's it's very helpful.
That really helps. That really helps.
Thank you, nothing worse than looking back and listening.
Before we call, well, I'll Linda finish, I'll I'll. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, before we call, um, I don't want to take much more time. Thank you, thank you again. Andrew, you have any, anything? Okay, nothing, everything's cool. Okay, all right, any board members, anything to discuss? Okay, anybody from the public, anything to discuss? Seeing none, I bring it back. Um, any roll call closing? Just a motion to close.
No, not yet, you still have to announce December.
Yes, I knew she kept me on. So I need to announce that there will be two December land use board meetings, everybody. The first one is on December sixteenth, which we're still working through the uh, the agenda. But the second one, as we already know, and we all agree to, is the senior housing finishing of the senior housing called on December eighteenth. If we can get that done, if not, it will continue. But the eighteenth is specifically for senior house, I'm sorry, for the senior uh. The health facility nursing, okay? All right, Linda.
Perfect.
Thank you. Having said that.
Everybody comes also.
Yeah, um.
See what happens, like tonight what happened, we're short two people and it possibly could cause an issue.
Yeah.
But if you can't come, just let me know as soon as possible.
Because because, I mean, just backing that up, I mean, I know we discussed this one of our last meetings, but, um, you know, I start trying to do roll call. For figuring out who's going to be here a week before. This way we can start to make plans and, you know, I I call Linda up to ask her who's who's in and who isn't. Life happens, I know that these are volunteer positions, everybody, I realize that. Um, I know that sometimes things occur, okay, and I am super sensitive to that. But, you know, we need to, we need to at least know so that we can plan accordingly, okay? And Linda's calling, you know, texting, calling, and and even, you know, very be asking who's going to be here. So please, if you guys, if we could just know as far as it, okay? Uh, all right, I'm done, thank you everybody for being here a little late, I apologize for coming so late. I'm going to stop, and I have a uh motion to uh to conclude our meeting.
Motion to.
I'll second you. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, seeing none, thank you very much. Final, final to everybody, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
And I have to tell you how much I'm grateful for all of the support that you provide to the town, to me, and to members of the board, thank you very much.